At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Let's call the meeting to order and Dan Joradet is going to talk about the capital improvement program.
Yeah. Finally. Structure of the capital improvement program includes buildings, streets, stormwater, sewer parks, large equipment, things that require an identified source of funding to become realities. Because they involve so much funding, we need to do them in multiple year increments so that we can see the impact of the decisions now on what our funding might be through the years. There are other things that are sometimes considered capital, there are regular pieces of operating equipment or vehicle purchases. Those are currently done through the operating funds, and so we don't have them in the capital plan at this point, but we are looking at that possibility. The timing on the capital improvement program should be that it's done in late December so that it can be incorporated into the operating budget as it goes through. It's obviously not late December. It's because of some of the changes we've made in the format, some changes we've made in the focus of looking at funding sources and long-term health of those funding sources, and simply communicating between all the parties that need to be part of the decision, it has taken longer. We will not ask for approval of anything today. I simply wanted to take a little time today to orient you to the plan, to give you some documents to look at, so that you're not coming into it cold at the next meeting when we sit down to talk about it. We put a lot more emphasis on reviewing funding sources this time around, and there are a couple of examples I would draw your attention to. First of all, on pages 13 and 14, you'll see the hotel motel tax fund. And one of the things that you'll see in there is that we've talked about replacing the parking lots, fixing the parking lots, for quite a long time. Well, we put those into the plan to see where that would put us as far as cash. And on the next page, what you'll see is that in the blue line, it shows us the CIP funding that we would be using out of that fund. In 2017, there'd be 790,000. We'd go up to 1,005, 2,004, and 1,005 in '18, '19, and '20. And those are primarily because of those parking lot repairs that would be proposed. Now, what happens then is that between the cash needed, which is the line below that, and then the annual cash produced, we're using a little more cash than what we're actually producing. So by 2019, we're showing a cash deficit in that fund. That's not appropriate for us to do. So we have to look at the plan out into the future years and say, okay, how are we either going to adjust the projects, adjust the timing on the projects, or adjust the funding to make it possible to do this? Now, the other thing about the hotel motel fund is that you can see it goes down as low as 1.2 million, but then it starts to come back up so that the funding replenishes itself. This presents a possibility of funding it through, say, a five-year loan program, either from another fund, or from a bank, or from a bond sale, so that there are alternatives to covering this cash shortfall. But we need to take a look at those seriously, find out what the costs are, and then measure how important it is to do those projects if we want to take that debt on to do those things. Another one is on pages 18 and 19, the refuse and recycling fund. There's very little in projects in the refuse and recycling fund. There's 200,000 for fiscal '17. But if you look at the cash flows on page 19, what you'll see is that even though there are very few cash flows for capital, we are beginning to have a cash need that is higher than what's produced. In other words, we run at a deficit, and we go into a negative cash position about 2020 if we don't make changes. That's the strength of doing this kind of analysis is to say, okay, if we continue on assumptions we have, what's going to happen to us financially? It gives us the time then to adjust our expectations, both as far as operations, as far as capital, and as far as rates and income. What you'll see is that in this fund, the third revenue piece down is called recycling center fees. I'm sorry, the fourth line, sale of recyclables. The market in that area has gone down significantly, 385 to 340 to 275, and we're expecting it to continue to drop for the foreseeable future. That means that one of our major sources of funding is going down. So we'll have to look at what that portends for our future operations and make some decisions on what we're going to do there. One of the most important and frankly challenging ones is on pages nine and 10, and that's our bond funding. On page nine, what you'll see is all of our bonding for capital, and that includes $20 million, split into 9.9 million and 10.1 million for a police facility. That's in there because it's something that we've voted, or the citizens have voted to allow us to pursue, and so that's a part of what we're doing. But then if you come down and reduce the bottom need lines, you're seeing what comes through on actually page 10. Page 10 is a little bit different analysis. What it shows in the upper sections are the principal and interest levy payments that we're going to be levying taxes for. It shows that on that yellow highlight, that the 2015 A bonds are going to increase the levy significantly in 2019 by about $200,000, but then drop off by 400,000 in the next year, leaving us more room for bond issuance capacity.
And so just for those new, during those, those are the years we issued the bonds.
Yes.
And in some years, we issued multiples, so that would be the A, B, C.
Correct, correct. The green sections that you'll see are places where we finish paying for bonds, and so those levies drop off, giving us capacity to issue bonds for new projects, to do new things, without raising the levy. So the way that this has run is that we've had to make some assumptions here. The first one is that we want the tax rate to stay at about 2.45%. That's what it was for this fiscal year. It was higher in all the previous fiscal years back to 2010. It's a little bit lower for fiscal 2017, but that's primarily because we did not issue any bonds yet, and so we couldn't levy for them. Those are shown in the light brown area, what the new issues would be. We have the capacity then, given our tax base at $2.6 trillion, or trillion units of tax base, to issue about $6.7 million in CIP bonds. And that's been about the average that we've issued when we've issued new money for bonds. Now, in the pink there, you're seeing 1.2 million for the Playland Park Phase II and the 2.75 million for the Echo acquisition. Those were pieces that were in the 2016, the current year's plan. But the current year's plan only sold 6 million in bonds on $10 million in requests, so some of those had to be funded from future issues. That's why we presented those reimbursement resolutions to you, so that future bonds could be used to pay for past costs. What that does then is if we reduce the 6.7 by those two, it leaves us about 2.7 for fiscal year '17 projects. And through some work and consideration, we have reduced the demand for fiscal '17 to 2.7 million in projects. So we're in good shape for that one. The next year, fiscal '18, you're seeing that if we have a 3% growth in our tax base, we keep the tax rate at about 2.45%, we have the capacity to issue 2.5 million dollars in bonds. We have CIP requests currently of 6.447 million. That means we have to make an adjustment of almost $4 million in our expectations for the fiscal '18 year. In addition, in fiscal '19, partly because of that yellow increase, and because there were some changes in amortization of bonds, stretching them from 10 years to 15 years, we have, even with a 3% growth in our tax base, we have no capacity to issue additional debt for capital projects.
Without raising the debt levy?
Without raising the levy. And again, that's another assumption here, is that we're not raising the levy. Then if we go to 2020, we're seeing that we have about a half a million dollars dropping off of the previous payments. That allows us, with the increase in the tax base, to issue almost 9.5 million in bonds, and about 9.2 million in the following year. Now, again, the assumptions that these are based on is that the tax rate will stay at 2.45, the tax base will grow at 3%, the bonds will come down from amortizations of 15 years to 10 years. And the reason that that assumption comes down is that, first of all, the projects that we're doing need to be paid off sooner than 15 years in order to make sense for paying for them with debt. Then, 15 years versus 10 years is frankly a higher interest cost, because we have to pay interest on some of that principal for another five years. So in order to reduce the cost, and reduce the length of time, and increase the number of bond issues that fall off, or increase the speed with which bond issues get paid off, and make additional capacity available, we want to drop that amortization down to 10 years. If though, we wanted to do all those projects, all 6.4 million of those projects in 2018, we could raise the levy $520,000, or about 1.08% in the overall levy.
I did the math, and that's pretty much equates to 51 cents. It's comparable to the bond issue for the police department.
Right, because that was put together at a longer amortization period, which drops the annual cost. This squeezes from 30 years down to 10 years, and requires a higher per year.
51 cents per thousand, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a lot.
So we've looked at a number of different pieces on how to handle this. I just wanted you to see how those sheets were laid out so that as you're looking through the material, you'll have an idea of what's happening. Finally, I'd like to look at-
Bottom line is, we gotta run lean for two years.
Please.
You're putting us on a budget.
Run lean for two years, or raise taxes. On page, let's see, oh, where am I? Pages 15, 16, and 17, we have the local option sales tax. On page 16, you'll see a notice that we recently received from the state, and it says, rather than getting 9.43 million in sales tax for this fiscal year, you should expect to get 8.43 million.
What page is that?
So they've cut back, that's the page there, page 16, and at the bottom, those blue numbers.
Oh, okay.
The old total was 9.434 million. The new total, as given to us by the state, is 8.439 million in sales tax. That means, as you can see in the distribution up above, that we will drop in our May, June, and July payments from 790,000 to 40,000 for three months. It appears that the sales tax money has not been coming in as much as what the state originally projected. What I would like to be able to do is to look at the next year's projections and say, okay, is this a trend? Is this something that we had a temporary piece? But the next year's trends will not come in until August of this year. So right now, I have nothing to really compare with, but-
I think we had historically 7 million, high 7 millions in sales tax, and then, I don't know that it's 100% attributable to Google, but when Google was really doing a lot of construction, and people were in town, and ate restaurants and what have you, it went up really high for one year, and then the state projected off that.
Yeah, if you want to look at page 17, that'll give you some indication as to what we're looking at. Excuse me. In fiscal '13, you'll see that we have cash built up in that sales tax fund of 12.78 million. It was obviously planned that we were going to do projects into the future that were going to need that cash. So they built that up so that we could do, for example, in '14, we had cash needs of 15,464,000 right below the blue line, and we had cash produced, so we had to use about 5.4 million of that reserve to do the projects we had planned. That's all well and good, but if we do that for a long time, we begin to get to the point that we get to negative cash. Right now, Public Works is working through the projects that we have in the program, looking for ways to reduce the costs. And what that points out for me, and hopefully it points out for you, is that although we get this plan put together, or this program put together at a point in time, there are often circumstances that are going to require that we change the program, and we change it fairly quickly. So what we will provide you in two weeks is the best program that we have at this point. If we find that there are changes to the funding sources, on one hand, or changes to the needs for capital construction, if another sewer collapse occurs or something, then we will look at revisions and using those funds. But the goal is, of course, to get the priority projects done, and to be able to pay for them without issuing too much debt.
So if you look at that top line, and I was a million short, it was 8.3, 8.9, and then all of a sudden, 2015, it went to 11.3. And now it's going back to more typical numbers, I guess.
What's kind of worrying is that decrease may accelerate, according to Department Revenue Letter, based upon their final reconciliation to come in November.
Well, and that's, what they showed on that page is that they're still expecting to send us $400,000 in November as an adjustment, so we factored that in. But I would be much more comfortable presenting a program if we had their projections for next year, which will not come until August.
Yeah.
When they come in, look at those, we'll put together something as fast as we can. But also, we will put together the capital program much earlier in the next year. It needs to be done as close to the end of this calendar year as we can get it, so that we can incorporate it into the operating budget numbers that we put forth in March. I'm not going to make any excuses for that, but I will say that we did the best to come up with a coherent plan. It took us longer than we expected, and that rests entirely with me. I will take that on. So I'll leave you with that for the time being. As I said in my memo, if you have questions, if you want to discuss the data, please let me know. I'd be more than happy to go over what we've done and try to help you understand what's there, so that you're making good decisions for the future of the city.
So to, just to recap, so what you have provided us is, in essence, the CIP that we will be asked to approve at the next council meeting.
With probably some modifications in the sales tax fund.
Okay.
So that we can get that closer to balancing.
And I-
But what we have in the packet is a summary of projects by department, which is what we've seen most often. Then we have a summary listing of projects by funding source, so that you can see the demands on each funding source. Then each funding source has detail as to what's being asked of it, and how that will affect the cash flows and the cash balances of those funds over the next five years, given the assumptions we have now.
Okay, I guess in reviewing how it was presented for the last years.
Yeah.
It was kind of done year by year, so you could look at the individual project, or item of work that was to be done, and then you could follow the different sources of funding.
Right.
On that particular page.
Right.
And so I guess where I'm coming from then, is there a way to kind of recapture that information, so that we can see all the different sources of funding going in?
To a particular project.
Correct.
It sure is, it's right here.
Good on you.
(laughing) We have detail sheets then for each project that's listed by department. And I think the better way to distribute this, if you want to see it, would be to make a PDF of it and send it to you. But that will give you, for example, the, oh, now let's get back here a little farther. All right, in a project for building demolition, it has a combination of gaming fund and grant funds in it, it will show you the total cost, and then below that, it will show you the funding sources to equal that total cost.
Okay. Now, I noticed that that's a pretty thick stack of papers, then, that would be put into a PDF format. Is it possible for us to get a binder copy of that? That might help expedite-
If you would like.
Yeah.
If you would like.
I'm kind of a paper guy, so. PDFs are kind of hard to work with and manage.
Mm-hmm, they can be. So there are two ways I can do it, and I will do them both. One is to get a binder copy. The other way is to break it down into departments, and send each department as a PDF by itself, so you can look at those as well.
I will apologize in advance for all the trees that will be killed in the effort.
Well, as long as they're not ash trees. I mean, we're fighting for those already, so we'll try to find paper that is non-ash paper.
Maybe that's good, they're getting cut down anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I can see.
Criminal trees. But do you want emerald ash borers in your paper?
All right, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, review agenda, anything on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
On 4D, Playland Urban Renewal Plan, I was asking before if we could have an update on where we are with anticipated lease commitments for the office structure being built out there, or structures.
Yeah. Prior to the July 11th public hearing, which is the date, we would have a lease purchase agreement on the agenda for public hearing. And if all goes well in the next week or so, I will be asking you to set July 11th for the date of the public hearing on Office Building 1. Prior to that, I would say the last week of June or July, we will try to get you an update with the various parties, and they also will be present at the council meeting.
Well, we're being asked to vote on the Urban Renewal Plan this evening, which envisions a number of changes, increases in types of expenditures that include the parking garage.
Yes, they do.
And when Mr. Dillinger last spoke to this on October 12th, he mentioned that they hadn't yet been successful in negotiations with any of the three, I take that to mean three corporate entities that were being engaged in discussion. So I'm kind of wanting to know, before we take action on the Urban Renewal Plan, to start setting a number of other actions into motion, whether or not anticipated business conditions have improved.
Well, the Urban Renewal Plan itself does not commit you specifically to approving or disapproving those contracts. The Urban Renewal Plan has to be adopted, and all Urban Renewal Agreements must be consistent with it. That's all SaaS.
Okay, that's a way to look at it, I understand. Now, the Urban Renewal Plan, again, with respect to the parking garage, says that lease payments are anticipated to be 11 to 15 million dollars, with total project costs of 11 to 12 million dollars. But the action, the resolution that you referenced that will be coming up on 11 July, says that up to 17 million dollars will be provided in lease payments. So we then have a difference between the Urban Renewal Plan and what's been put on the agenda for July.
Well, that's because, even though you may execute an agreement, there are possible changes to it. We have included the 2 million that the city would include in it, the 2 million that Iowa West would put into it, potential for a repayment of Iowa West of the guarantee, plus the lease payments. I mean, it's like, you can look at the office buildings, okay? You know, the 2014 amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, you know, specifically said "commercial office." Construction of office buildings containing a total of 80,000 to 120,000 square feet with adjacent parking structure, okay? That's what was approved in 2014. What we're doing here is we have taken and broken down Office Building 1 as a specific project, because there's a development agreement on Office Building 1. Office Building 2, we're projecting that there'll be a development agreement with that, and a parking garage. So it's more specific to these projects. And I know your concern is with the increase in what you see as far as the numbers. But just for example, here is part of the problem that we face. You can take Office Building 1, and it reflects 65,000 square feet. The agreement that'll come forth to you has a minimum SaaS value of 9 million, okay? What if that's 18 million? I don't have control over it, you don't have control over it, the mayor does not have control over it, the assessor does. So that's why you see these wide ranges. We're using the same essential rebate schedule, so that's why you will see a range. The other thing I think you have to take into consideration is, originally, we were thinking 120,000 square feet. That number has been kicked up to 200,000, because we have two lots. That could accommodate up to 200,000 square feet. That increases the investment in the office building by 67%. That increases the investment in the office building by 67%. Thus, it increases the assessed value, it increases the taxes, and it'll also increase the rebates. You know, so...
So...
I would say there's really three things why the numbers have increased under, you know, Office Building 1, 2, and the parking garage. And one is, we've increased the amount of square footage that is potentially possible. Doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
The fact that we have difficulty in determining what the assessed values are, so we have to have a range. You know, if the developers want some sort of assurance that, well, you know, we may have a minimum assessment rate of $9 million in an office building, but if it comes in at 15, they'll hit their cap real quick.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that's the second reason. And the third is really fully costing out the parking garage. More space, more parking needs. So that's why, those three things, why those numbers are going up.
So I guess what I hear you saying is that there's a great deal of uncertainty at this point as to what the developer may be inclined to build.
I will let the developer tell you that. I'm pretty sure that Nodle and Iowa West will come here and tell you they're committed to committing, building a 65,000 square foot office building and show you illustrations of it. I see no reason why that is in doubt.
And you also mentioned that we have uncertainty in that we don't know, once these things, once they decide to make a decision, actually construct, we really have no idea what the assessed valuation is going to be on these things.
We can put a minimum assessment there, but the assessor is charged with putting a number that he feels is appropriate.
Okay.
The other thing you have to think about is, what do I use as a comparable? We haven't built a Class A office building in this community since 1985. And that was the building where Harlem Properties is located. And that's 35,000 square feet. I mean, it's a little bit more difficult for us if it was a strip center or an apartment complex. Even in apartment complex, we haven't had a new apartment complex market rate built in this community since 10 years ago, with more than 25 units in it. So some things have, you know, that are comparables, and I think we could kind of drill down and get a better feel.
Depending on who they're leasing to and what those leases are, they'll use that as part of their equation for figuring out what that assessment is, so...
You know, going through this process and the changes with the urban renewal, is I've come to the conclusion that we are going to have to do in an urban renewal amendment in almost every development agreement that we do. We have to actually negotiate a development agreement, and then bring it forth with an urban renewal amendment, which just adds time. But that's just the reality of it. I mean, and this project here is we've got three things going simultaneously, an office building, a parking garage, and, you know, construction of about 250 apartment units. So we're trying to do those all simultaneously. And maybe that is too much to ask. Maybe it's too unmanageable, but we're trying.
Okay. So for the construction of the office buildings, the basic TIF construct seems to be sufficient in order to incentivize the construction or the actual development. For purposes of the parking garage, we'll be utilizing the TIF, but we're entering into this lease agreement, which may provide lease payments that are, in effect, are above and beyond what the developer would otherwise receive back through TIF repayment.
I'm not sure I follow what your question is.
Well, we're not leasing the office buildings, we're...
No, we don't own that.
Correct. And we won't own the parking garage either until...
We make the full lease payments and the principal's paid off.
Correct. But if they were to construct the parking garage using just TIF resources, they...
It is TIF resources to pay the lease.
Well, that's true, but we're going to be making payments which run over 20 years, which will run over the actual development costs.
No, they'll cap it 20 years, but 20 years...
Okay.
Over, no.
We gotta relook at the figures again. Okay, I'll relook there, thank you.
So we're tiffing something that we're gonna own?
Yeah. We're using the TIF money from the development that's not there today to make the lease to own payments, so that we'll own the parking garage at some point. So 25% of the new valuation will go towards TIF payments, TIF, or towards lease payments, that the incremental value will go towards lease payments to pay off the cost of the garage. So it won't come from any other funding source outside of the development, it won't come from taxpayers, it will come from the new development created. And it's a key component to...
Plus, if there's any shortfall from the TIF revenue to make the lease payments, Iowa West Foundation has agreed to step up.
And when you, you know, when we get, you've got that development agreement in front of you that has been presented, and that's set for a hearing on the 11th. But, you know, I guess, you know, my philosophy in preparing these urban renewal plans is to give the city enough flexibility to adapt these agreements in projects to fit the plan. And to cut down on unnecessary paperwork and notification processes and all that.
And the condo developer was gonna be smaller, now they're talking bigger, it was gonna be later, now it may be sooner, so that parking garage may be paid off sooner rather than later, and they're not gonna get unduly enriched by...
No. No, I guess, you know, what I would say is, this is my arguments to you, is, you know, I think you have to look at this as an economic development initiative to some degree. I've already said, the last office building we built in this community was the Redlands Building in 85. In fact, the city actually paid for that parking garage next to it, albeit smaller. They did pay for it at that time. You know, the community itself can't even compete in the realm of economic development for office work, because you don't have any offices to lease. You know, you always have industrial development, you have distribution and all these things, but a lot of things, I read, the amount of technology and robotics and driverless vehicles is vastly gonna change how we see things in the future. And you could see a warehouse with a person in it and a bunch of robotics, served by driverless trucks. Military does it now. So it's coming there. The city also has received $2 million in RISE funds to build, you know, to help assist the construction of office buildings. If we don't do that, we're gonna have to deal with consequences of that.
$2 million to help with the office buildings, or $2 million to help with the parking structure?
It's for the streets.
The streets, to get the roads there.
It's a RISE grant, which is renew Iowa's...
Revise Iowa's sound economy. That's what it's called.
And so you have to do it for commercial development. If it doesn't become a commercial development, then you have to repay the...
And I think if we don't have Office Building 1, you know, I think the question of having more of an upscale apartment becomes in question. I still think that we can get apartments that look like River Park to the south, but that's a suburban style, they're not to the same level as what's being proposed. So I think that becomes in question. You certainly aren't gonna get a second office building. I think you would really question getting any condominium development. So, you know, and, you know, obviously, we wouldn't get some retail, but we don't look at the site as a retail site. I mean, we think it's more convenience retail for the people that work and live there. I don't think you're gonna go down there and be entertained, but time will, and the market will dictate that. You know, and, you know, I personally think that, you know, the Rivers Edge project, if it's successfully implemented, leads to other opportunities in our west side of our community. And I think it positions us well to do some interesting things off of Broadway and on Broadway. And I think if we don't have success there, then I think that puts our redevelopment efforts west Broadway kind of more as status quo, what we've seen. So...
Has there been any discussion as to not automatically succeeding to ownership of the land, but having an option to purchase, if even for a nominal value? I'm thinking ahead, you know, in 15, 20 years' time, the government at the time may find that the parking garage is not something that ought to be taken on by the taxpayers, kind of like Midland Mall would perhaps be an example of a parking garage we, I don't think we could have gotten rid of quicker, or wanted to anyway. But then again, it may be that the private sector's doing a great job at it, and government doesn't need to step in and do it. I think that's unlikely, but it's possible. And was there any thought to doing that? So I'm not saying a true lease, but a lease that would automatically have the citizens assume this liability, asset and liability, to be fair.
We've looked at a variety of operations, including private ownership, but...
Sure.
I just don't think that that is in the cards.
Why not?
For one, you know, first of all, you go right back to the question of market. I mean, when's the last 65,000 square foot office building or 135,000 square office building has been built?
Sure.
And then you look at how those office buildings are, in fact, taxed, I mean, they're taxed at 90%, you apply our levy. I mean, you have to provide a TIF rebate of almost 50% just to make the taxes equivalent to neighboring jurisdictions.
Why could...
So, you know, it becomes very difficult, you run out of resources fairly quickly.
Why couldn't we TIF to some organization that, let's say, the owners of those buildings or businesses could, so that it would help them, incentivize them to get it started, and then presumably their businesses are going to do very well? And then they can own it and pay for their own parking. Why assume it in perpetuity? That's the part where I wish I could feel more of a comfort level about.
Well, thus far, the owners of the parking garage, I mean, office building, that partnership is unwilling to do so.
And the first tenor of that, it would be Iowa West, is that right?
Iowa West and Nodle, it's a partnership.
Okay. And who, I'm sorry, the second?
Nodle.
Nodle, thank you, thank you.
What with the taxes and something like that, they can even...
No, there is, you know, possibility, you know, but, you know, I'm not...
Can't they swap the debt?
That some entity comes in and builds its own facility and wants to control its parking.
Sure.
You know, and we could either... I'm not sure exactly what we could do there, whether we can assign some of the lease purchase agreement, whether or not it can be condoized at the time.
Sure.
I don't know.
I just wish that decision didn't have to be made today, and there are other...
Well, it doesn't have to be made today, because all you're doing is setting the stage for it possibly to be made. I mean, if it's not in the urban renewal plan itself, forget having a public hearing on the agreement. Forget having a public hearing on the office building, because you can't take action on it, because it's not consistent with the urban renewal plan. This plan is just showing you that we are envisioning a series of projects that we're describing, and we're describing some incentives in here, and we're giving you a pretty wide range.
And in theory, at whatever point the garage is paid for, you could sell it for a dollar.
I mean, I'll give you a classic case here. I mean, we are proposing a development agreement on a 65,000 square office building, okay? In the development agreement itself, and it's gonna hold, and when you see it, it shows a minimum assessed value of $9 million, okay? That will produce X amount of taxes over the length of the term of this thing, of 4.5 billion, okay?
How will...
So that's why we're saying, throw them 4.5 million.
How will a nonprofit pay? Is, was Iowa West intending to pay property tax?
Yeah.
Okay. At full?
I mean, if it's a leased facility and there is an exchange of money, the assessor's gonna tax it. Heck, this could be owned by the City of Council Bluffs, and if you're leasing it, they're gonna tax you.
Okay, okay, that's good to know.
You know, plus, we're putting in a minimum assessment agreement, and, you know, they're gonna hurt themselves by not doing it. Take... But I guess my point is, is even though you see in here Office Building 1, a 4.5 to $9 million value, the agreement that's gonna come forth to you is 4.5. That's approximately what it's gonna be. But the question is, is what if? What if that gets tagged with an $18 million assessment? Because we also have to have, in our development agreements, a total compensation cap. Otherwise, how do we tell the public what it's costing?
No, I don't disagree with that. It'd be paid off quicker, but we'd own it quicker, we'd have the liability quicker, too.
Well, I'm just saying, that's why you have this range, okay?
Well, I'm just not sure we wanna own something... I don't know either way, frankly, I'm genuinely not sure whether we wanna own something that we're not sure the viability of, or if the private sector could do it. I'd rather have that be kept open somehow, if possible.
Well, I would like more information as to how the City of Omaha has structured this, because they seem to have turned the corner on their own parking plans and development, and how they manage the parking garage system. The primary difference being, of course, that some of those structures, they built on their own, which in Iowa would require going to a bond referendum with the voters...
That's not true.
Well, actually, it is.
Or a lease, which is exactly what we're doing. So that's the correct way.
Well, Omaha's...
Well, that's a way to do it, I'm saying, if the city were to build it, it would have to bond for it.
Half of Omaha's downtown parking is owned privately, half of it's owned publicly.
A lot of it's private.
But, you know, take First National Bank Building, the new one. Is there any parking associated with it?
It's that Omaha Park 1, I can't think of what it's called, yeah?
Okay, Union Pacific, any parking associated with it? I mean, it's part of the economic development package that they've, you know, drafted. Now, it is a different market, it's a different community, they have different ways of doing things, but it is...
And a different property tax structure.
Yeah, it is a different, a different thing. I mean, it is expensive to own a parking garage. A lot of people are trying to take that off of their ledger privately.
I just don't know if I wanna own another business more with parking garage.
But I think those two examples are probably... I mean, I don't know all the details of it, but I'm gonna guess that's what they do. In fact, I'm gonna guess they actually encourage you to pay for a mad bus ticket.
Yeah, you can have a choice, that's how it is for the park. We can get free bus pass, or you can pay $80 a month to bargain the parking garage.
That's true. Can't disagree with that.
And I think that's kind of the point being made by Mr. Watson and myself, that it would...
But I'm gonna guess, if you total... But I'm going to guess, if you total up even what they're paying for, you know, uh, that, that's doing maintenance. To my understanding, they, they're paying this out of their general fund as far as constructing these things, so. I'm just figuring that the growth will take care of it.
They, they have made a number of recent changes over there that, that took it from a deficit program to, I, I guess, that they're, they're now breaking even, if not even better than that. And to make, to make Mr. Watson's point, yeah, I would, I would like to know what we can learn from their changes.
Well, we are going to schedule that before you are asked to sign off on the actual commitments to these agreements. So we will get that, you know, get those people in front of you, and you can ask those questions.
Is there any reason why this couldn't be heard in conjunction with that at the same time?
Uh, as far as delaying the public hearing?
Yeah.
Or postponing it to the...
I would like to have more information about other options, and it may very well be they don't work. I honestly don't know. I just would like to know more.
Well, I, as long as it is scheduled and approved prior to, uh, the development agreements on that night, I would say not, reason why you couldn't.
I would have a greater comfort level having that.
You want to postpone the urban renewal amendments? That's what you want to postpone?
Yes.
They don't require us to do anything if we do the urban renewal amendments. There's no commitment on our part, one way or the other. All we're doing is making it a possibility by passing those tonight.
But wouldn't we have to then cha- if, if we decided to go a different route, we'd have to change that, wouldn't we?
Yes, we would. We'd start all over again.
They say we're going to be changing it every time we do something.
True, but I, I'd rather have more information before doing it theoretically. Uh, I just think in the end, that would save time. If it doesn't prejudice anything, and it doesn't sound like it does, I just would rather have it all at the same time. I, I just would feel better.
So do it all July eleventh?
Judging from the amount of upheaval noted in the Nonpareil World Herald article about ConAgra and how that impacts their downtown development plans, I, I'd kind of like more information, too. I mean, the, even, even the city of Omaha is kind of left groping in the dark, trying to figure out how it wants to go with its downtown area because ConAgra hasn't made the decision yet on which of the structures it's going to, to vacate, either downtown or, or out in western Omaha.
The difference being, though, we have, we have a project in hand, they don't.
Um, we have a development in hand being worked on right now, so we can't just stop everything we're doing. We have that development. It's not like it, it's, it's not like them, they're trying to figure out a future plan for theirs. We have a plan, we've worked on this plan, Melissa, since, before I've been on council, this plan started being worked on. So, you know, it's not, I, I don't see sitting around waiting to see what they do with the ConAgra property is benefiting us at all. I, I think, you know, let's just go ahead and lose a developer while we wait on figuring out what they're doing. I mean, obviously, from the very beginning, I mean, I can understand the concerns with the parking garage, I, obviously I can, but as said at the last meeting, we spent one point two million dollars on a parking lot on Vine Street. We've never asked the owners down there to contribute towards the cost of that or buy that lot, and they wouldn't be in business right now if we didn't have a lot. So these are the things you do when you're trying to develop an area. And I know the concerns over the parking garage, and I don't discount them. But at the same time, you know, Councilman Ringenberg's been against this project on every single vote from day one, so, you know, now it's starting to talk about waiting to find out what's going to happen with ConAgra, that really worries me. It's like, let's just lose a, a developer while we sit around and wait? Let's get the parking garage figured out, let's get as much information as we can, but at the same time, don't just say, oh, well, you know, we're just not going to do anything and lose a developer, or we're going to put you off until we know what ConAgra's doing? That's, that makes absolutely no sense whatsoever, I, I think.
Well, I guess what, what I'm struggling to try and make sense of is, is at a time when our neighbors across the river are looking at a tremendous amount of excess office space, why we think that we're going to benefit from building additional office space that is likely to set empty over here?
Well, because we're not building it. We've got a developer that's building it, that's going to be paying taxes on it, and a developer that has a track record, mind you, a really good track record, and would not be in, he would not be investing in this project if he didn't feel that he could make it work. It's up to him to make it work, and he wouldn't be investing in it if he couldn't. I mean, this isn't some guy who's never developed before, very successful developer. So, you know, he knows quite well what office space is available, and on my bet, he could just name it off and what those rates are just off the top of his head, because that's how involved that person is. I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, is that because Omaha's behind the curve, you want us to drop the ball and get behind the curve with them? I don't understand that. We have somebody willing to build a building who says they have leases in place that will come to you and tell you where they're at on that.
They haven't said that they have leases in place.
Well, you know they do because they've got Iowa West Foundation in place, so that's a...
You also have to think of it this way. Uh, it takes eighteen months to build, they got to go through this process. I mean, who's going to sign on a dotted line until they know that they're actually under construction?
Right.
They can't deliver. When you come into my office and I'm, I'm a leaser, you know, and you're looking for a client, I can say, well, we could put you out, you know, two years from now. You got to have the product there.
And you have to know you can have parking for it.
And you got somebody willing to take a risk for it.
Parking helps fill the gap among the inequity in the property taxes.
And yes, you know, you could sit here and say that Omaha's got some, you know, maybe some vacancies and stuff, but you know, my counterparts see some of the changes over there as opportunities, and they will take advantage of them. They've got activity all over. So, uh, it's highly competitive. I mean, you've got New Style proposing to put in, what, one hundred seven fifty apartment units on the old Children's Hospital, they're still working with the old, uh, uh, site at, uh, what's the civic auditorium? And trust me, they will find somebody to redevelop the two office buildings or whatever they're going to close at ConAgra fairly quickly. I, I have no doubt about it. Uh, and, you know, we have a window. You know, every project has a window, and I think now is the time to do it, so.
You said the, the building, the Heartland Properties, the Heartland Properties owns thirty-five thousand square feet roughly?
Correct.
I mean, how many businesses are in there? Probably eight, maybe more?
Oh, I don't know.
Uh, there's Heartland has the first floor, Nonpareil has the top floor, and the middle floors, maybe four, four, four.
Title company and a couple of...
Six, eight. So let's say five or six. I mean, that's thirty thousand square feet, this is double that.
Yes, it is.
And we've got two people that are willing, Nodle and Iowa West?
No.
Well, I'll let them explain to you who they have and who they don't have, okay?
I guess, I guess I'm just, I kind of lean with Nate here on, on delaying it, but i- if we're going to build a parking garage, I'd like to know, are we building it and nobody's going to park in it? I'd like to know who's going to, who's going to be there. You know what I mean? Like, I mean, that's, sixty-five thousand square feet's a lot of space, I get that, but if there's nobody to park there, why are we building it?
Well, because they won't be, they won't be able to lease it without parking.
Correct.
And they are going to build it, and, and they are going to sign a minimum assessment.
And we are not building a parking garage, okay? We're not.
I can imagine it would take a lot less time to build a parking garage than it would to build an office building. Is that true?
No.
No.
Probably.
You know, it has, it has to be engineered and designed.
I know they take time.
Right, so if they start building that...
They've got a garage and it's not going up about the...
If they start building a building...
I don't know.
And they get people to sign the dotted line and lease it, I'm sure that we can get started on the parking garage after we know that there's going to be five, six businesses in there that can fill that parking garage up.
If the city council approves it, if, you know, all those ifs, I wouldn't sign a lease knowing that this council could say, nope, not going to do it. I just don't know how you can get a tenant that way. You're going to have to have arrangements for, for parking one way or the other, and even if that's a, we're not going to take the garage later, whatever it is that, you know, gives the council that comfort level with it, I, you got to have a time for parking, you're not going to give me a lease.
So why can't they build it themselves? I, nobody buys my parking lot if I build a building.
You'd be surprised, you already heard. We bought the parking garage for Heartland, the Redland Building, we bought the parking for the Hundred Block, we bought the parking for lots and lots of businesses. And the other side of that is, if you were down at any of the Last Fest events, I will never, ever, ever, ever park on the Riverside levy again. I was there for over an hour and a half, um, getting out. We don't have adequate parking for those functions down there, and that will give us parking for that, too. So that's the other upside of that. And, you know, we don't own that lot on the river down there where everybody's parking for Last Fest. That belongs, is it the DNR or...
I thought it was Caesars.
Mm-mm, they don't own it either.
DNR.
DNR, so, um...
Caesars leases it.
Yeah, so they actually, yeah, that...
So I think we have really, we have really two choices, go with what, uh, you know, uh, the, what is, is going to be presented to you, or, you know what, we dummy the project down in value, quality, um, and go forth, because we've got property we need to dispose of, and we've prepared it to be disposed of.
Well, let's schedule those informational meetings and...
We will, before the eleventh.
So is that something you want to...
So those will be something like where we just...
Say later?
Yeah.
Where we see...
I just need more information.
Oh, no, that's fine, I just want to mark it on there.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
You want to postpone or...
That's what we want.
Yeah. I am, I have told Marcy I am not here, not that necessarily matters, July eleventh for work, I am not in this region.
For that meeting?
For that whole week, yeah.
Oh, you're going to miss the next meeting.
Uh, Jul- the July eleventh.
Of July, yeah, okay, so this would be the meeting we're doing.
Not the next one, but the one after, yeah, I have to be in South Carolina.
Other questions on the public hearings?
We could get a little leisure time.
Not much, but a little.
Um, anything on...
I'm sorry, did you say resolutions?
Uh, not yet.
Oh, sorry.
But I'm just about to, so...
Oh, sorry.
Question on the, I was just looking to see if there was any ordinances, and doesn't appear there are, on the resolutions.
Uh, in five C, I wanted to update my colleagues. I reached out to a couple of the board leadership of the school board, had some initial conversations. You'll all recall that we received a letter from the superintendent, um, though on its face, very cordial, I have to say that I, I didn't take it very well, frankly. We, over the last several years, we've spent a lot of taxpayer money, a lot of it coming through in federal funds, but frankly, we could have spent it on other things, and indeed, I know I have delayed some of my own, um, preferred projects so that we could help with the school board, uh, with Gunn School, the former Gunn School, and the former Walnut Grove. Um, and a couple of weeks ago, we waived five figures on, um, permit fees that our building division will have to nonetheless, of course, do the work for safety. And we're setting a public hearing tonight for the next meeting to spend five hundred and fifty thousand of taxpayer sales tax funds to build a new entrance road and extension Avenue J to the, uh, athletic stadium for the schools. And I just think, I, I'm a big fan of, uh, of us working together to try to, to, to not, to, to work with other taxing entities so that taxpayers get a good deal. I, I'm concerned that it, it sounds very much like there's, because there are short-term leases at Washington School, um, the taxpayers were told, and I'm talking about the superintendent's letter, not the school board, to be clear, the su- the taxpayers were told when we approved the bond, that those of us in the Council Plus School District, not everybody in, in the town is in the school district, there are a lot of folks who pay a disproportionate share of the taxes, of course, who live in Lewis Central or otherwise, um, and I think we have to remember them. We were told that Washington School was a site that, uh, wasn't going to be for the future, the kids needed to be somewhere else, that was better, more conducive, I, I believe even safer, if I recall correctly. Um, and so we all agreed, as taxpayers, to build new schools, or I should say, most, some build new and some renovate substantially, and now we're told that Washington's in good enough shape that they might need it as a backup school, that I was asking, it doesn't appear like there are any immediate need. Um, frankly, I'm just very disappointed with the superintendent's letter. I, um, I expected after, you know, the city taxpayers have paid millions and the staff, particularly in community development, spending over several hundred hours, as, as far as I could tell, working on various proposals. I, I would hope for a bit more of reciprocity in this understanding, so it disappointed me. So I reached out to the, the school board, uh, leadership, uh, and to see, pursuant to your direction to me, to see if they would be agreeable. The initial discussions, they didn't go terribly far, to be frank, uh, but they had tentatively agreed to sit down the two leadership, uh, with me and another council person, and that meeting didn't end up happening. Um, they ultimately told me they were not comfortable, uh, meeting with, with me. Uh, they indicated they were confused, they thought that the city was giving mixed signals, they indicated that, in essence, uh, that the mayor had told them to forget it as too selling, that's...
Yes, I read that text, and it said, "The mayor told Bill Grove and Martha Bruckner that he thought the site was too small."
Yes.
I would stand by that statement today.
Well, they...
So I didn't tell them to forget it.
Well...
I just said, "The site..." They asked me that, the council appears interested in Washington School, what's your take on it? My take was, "I think the site's too small."
Well, I didn't send you a text, so that's interesting, but that is what the text and...
You didn't send it, but I saw it.
Well, that's nice, and when they saw it, uh, they indicated to me they took that as, "Forget it," and they refused to talk to me. Today I got, uh, an email from the superintendent who told me that she had asked you for permission to speak with me about this, and she...
She did, and I told her she certainly had any opportunity she wanted to talk to you, and...
Well, this ultimately goes to my problem, Mr. Mayor, that this council, as the charter says, and as the voters were assured by all five of us...
I would tell you, Nate, because, again, we're starting with...
That we decide where the school...
BS, they've got a different culture, apparently, where they can't talk to you. Today she came to me and said, "Mayor, I want to ask if you have permission to talk, if I have permission to talk to your council." And I said, "Martha, you don't need my permission, you can talk to anybody you want to on the council." So her perception is not my reality.
Well, people get this perception because this, this, so we're sitting here at the school board who is not comfortable, to use their own words, to meet with me because they think that you apparently have the choice over this. So I'm faced with a situation where maybe I wouldn't be able to negotiate a deal with the school board, the odds would be against it, I will concede that point, and like I always have. But it's in the charter and for, as the five of us stood up for this station, that we would make a decision as the whole government. And I'm not able to bring any proposal back for the other choice, and so tonight I'm faced with a decision to vote for one location, uh, and frankly, an artificial deadline because we still have not approved this option. So I, I would be much more comfortable delaying this so that this, if, if my colleagues are willing to say that they reaffirm what we said last time at our press conference, that we make the decision as the city government.
You do make the decision.
And so then the school board will talk to me, frankly, and so I can see if we can get a deal like my colleagues directed me to try to do. And, and it seems to me two things, one, that won't be past the period of the option, and two, again, I still, as I've always said, and we disagree on this, and fair enough, that we had no say in that, and we should have, but be that as it may, I just am not comfortable being, being painted into a corner on a decision, which in and of itself, I'll concede is a very good site, but it was supposed to be for us to be able to make that decision, and I just don't feel like, I feel like the cards have been stacked against it. And I want more time so that we can, I can at least try like I was directed to do, so I'd ask if my colleagues would agree that it is up to us to make that decision, so maybe the school board would actually continue to talk with me.
Well, Nate, I...
That's all I'm asking.
Passed out to everybody, you know, for me, no, I wasn't happy when we got the letter, but that isn't really what the final issue was. The final issue was, suddenly, I find out when I'm working on a project that the properties on the West Block that we, we would have to have just sold, and they sold for, uh, by high prices, and the... that we, we would have to have, just sold, and they sold for, uh, quite high prices. And the, uh...
They did, and it's shameful.
Yeah, and so, I looked at that...
And we didn't take out options on those.
Well, because...
Because we wanted one site, not that one.
Oh, I don't see it that way, but okay.
Well, I do. Well, why didn't we, we've been talking about Washington for months, and we don't take out options...
You didn't talk about Washington until three or four weeks ago. Come on, months.
No, we've been talking about that for years, Sharon and I.
It's been decades.
When, when they went, when the site selectors went out, it, well, and see, that was the thing. I did go to the, the public year, or public meeting with the roundtables.
Yes.
They had looked at Washington's site, and they were told by the school that it wasn't available. So, it went off the grid. So, there was no reason to go get any kind of option. So, that's kinda twisting it, maybe a little out of proportion.
I don't think so, because it was the superintendent saying it, not the people actually in charge, the school board. Just like here, not the people in charge have spoken.
But I'm telling you, the committee was coming back with, like, three options, and Washington wasn't one of them.
I know.
There would've been no reason to go out and try to wrap something up before it became public, since that wasn't gonna be one of the recommendations. So, I, I wanna be really careful we're not stretching it, you know, too far into some conspiracy that I don't think was the case on that option, because they didn't even put that out. Right, but I'm telling you that this, the way the events went down was, they were gonna be coming to the council
Mm-hmm.
with three properties.
Yeah.
And of those three properties, there was only one that it was felt was at risk, that somebody could go out and speculate on. This wasn't one of them, so...
And we didn't, we weren't a part of that decision, and secondly, the nego- negotiations for that option commenced two weeks prior to that public meeting, according to the paperwork. So, that, that rationale, the greatest respect to the mayor, doesn't hold.
Oh, had the committee not met and decided those were the three they were gonna move forward?
Yes, they had. They had the public meeting that you didn't attend. They gave the three locations two weeks prior.
I did attend. It was the night of the special meeting, that special council meeting, on a Tuesday. You, you commenced negotiations two weeks prior to that, to the paperwork I finally was able to get.
That's not true.
Okay, well, anyway, back to this point.
Well, that's what the dates say on the paperwork, sir.
All of this is, is rather a moot point, in that if you, even if you, even if we, the school board, would say,
Yeah.
"Yes," you know, which was my original hope, "yeah, you can have the property."
Sure.
"Yeah, you, you know, we're not gonna charge you for it."
After the millions we've given them, yes.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, particularly 10, 10B and the eastern edges who pay, don't pay council of state taxes.
But this changed everything, because now you've got somebody that just paid a half a million dollars.
On a property that would be condemnable if we sent the inspectors in today, just by walking by.
Right, but you're a lawyer. You know it's not gonna work that way. If we go in a domain to get these properties, we're gonna pay more than what he has a reported deed for, so...
If it deserves to be condemned, to be clear.
Well, I know, but you know what I'm saying.
I do know what you're saying, to be fair.
They're gonna get their appraisal. We're gonna get ours, and there's gonna be a third one.
Yep. I don't dispute that.
I, I was all about this. I, I had been watching the site for over five years, since Ralph brought us the first consideration of looking at a new building. And these properties were on the sell, you know, they had been on the market for about two years at that time. And I thought, you know, they're...
But why did...
They shouldn't be expensive properties to obtain. Um, but now, not only that, the one across the street, that was the top sheet I gave you, that one now is pending. So, um, we all know that speculation happens, and eminent domain doesn't accommodate that. If you bought it, you have a deed for it, that, some of that goes to market value, you know, not all of it.
I, I, I don't dispute that in the least. Mike is...
So, I look at that, and I say, Nate...
But why wasn't this part of the discussion? When the option was had without our knowledge or input, why couldn't we talk? Then you and I, I bet, I, speaking for myself, I would've said, "You know what? I'm still in favor of Washington. We're gonna look at options. We need to get the property next door that should be condemned." Because it, too, just for the same sound business reasons, and they are sound business reasons, of having an option,
Right, but they sold it April.
equally apply to that area.
These deeds are April, so, you know, what...
We've been talking about this for months, and, and so...
I know. I'm just saying that...
I, I'm just saying that I feel like we, the, the one, uh, we, we made an option on one that some people want to do, for good reasons. It's a very good property in and of itself. I just don't like being painted into a corner as to the decision we made.
You're not painting it into a corner.
I'm, I'm basically presented...
Don't buy it, and you get the money back. There's, I don't know how, the paint's dry. Walk right out.
Well, then, then because we didn't have that discussion, I can't get the one that I believe that I could get a consensus for, if all the pieces would go together, which you were not for. And so, it didn't happen.
I'm not against it at all. The, the simple statement, go back and look at your text.
The two hours we had discussion, you were very against it, very against it.
It says...
I don't read your texts, but read me more of mine.
Is that not what it said?
I'll read you texts, but it's curious how you read my texts. You're, so far, you've quoted them accurately.
I don't know, somebody took, some, and you know I'm not technologically astute, but...
Indeed.
Somebody printed off those texts, and it says, "Matt Walsh told Bill Grove and Martha that he thought the site was too small." Now, does that, is that...
In effect, "forget it." That's what they told, that's what I was told by Troy Arthur in the next breath. That's how they took it. They're not comfortable meeting with me. Apparently, they need permission to meet with the government as well.
They came to me and said, "Troy Arthur," this was at a fifth grade, "promise to succeed" ceremony. They said, "Nate Watson has contacted Troy Arthur, would like to discuss Washington School." I said, "He was tasked to do that by the council."
I was.
"What should we do?" And I said, "I don't know. I think the site's too small."
And you didn't take that as interfering in the process, when you tell people, as the mayor, that the site won't work? And then they tell me, they take it as "forget it," and they won't even speak to me.
I, I contacted another school board member as well, on the same subject. And, uh, she was, uh, she was, shall we say, gun-shy, to say the least, uh, to, to even discuss it, because she felt under some pressure.
It must be somebody different from me, because I spoke to two gentlemen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't get any indication. Was it because Martha had already said no, or was it...
It was because she had already weighed in on this and really didn't wanna have the discussion, which is kinda what I gleaned from it.
The same night, they wanna have $550,000 new entrance road to their athletic stadium, and they won't work with us. I, I just think that the elected officials of both bodies, that is, the school board, the folks really in charge of the government, and the council, and the mayor together, both in charge of this city, ought to be the ones that make decisions, not the unelected superintendent, and with the greatest respect to the mayor, not the person under the charter who has the authority to buy real estate. I, I think the right people, it matters that the right people weigh in. It, I know I make this process argument a lot, but it matters that we follow these processes correctly. We can't just come here and be a rubber stamp. No matter how good in and of itself any particular proposal may be, the process matters.
And that process is gonna take place tonight, I believe. I, you know, I, I don't have a vote, so...
Well, at this point, it doesn't much matter if we have a vote, because I've been precluded from having a section, second option that my col-... Well, people can, I guess, make their own mind up.
Well, it, it, under the statement, "I think the site's too small," eh, guess what? The site's too small.
That's your opinion, and it's not up to you.
But I think that's the reality, isn't it?
Uh, it's not up...
That's all I was saying. I think the site's too small. It's 2.9 acres. The consultant said we need five. I think the site's too small. Me, that's, I get an opinion.
Did you tell them that it wasn't up to you, and that you should therefore talk to the council members, or did you just leave it?
I didn't tell them not to talk to council members.
S- did you tell them, you did, you didn't tell them not to, so now I have to negate a negative? That, that isn't how people think, and you know it. That's silly.
But when somebody says, "Nate Watson contacted me about Washington School, what should we do?" I said,
You didn't say that's up for, for the council to decide?
No, I said, "He was directed by the council."
As I was, and you undermined me.
Yeah, I undermined you. I said, "I think the site's too small."
Well, it's none, it's not your decision.
Guess what? It turned out to be too small.
It's not your decision. And I'm tired of you taking our decisions away from us, or attempting to do so. It's this council's decision. This is what we told the voters would be, and this is what the charter says. And I'm not going to condone a misuse of power. I don't care who it is. You and I have been friends. I hope we remain friends. Maybe we won't after this. But this is business, and I have to sit here temporarily, as you sit in your chair temporarily. And we have to do it the right way, not just get the result we want. If I'd lost on this fair and square, I'd be perfectly, as anyone here would know...
I don't know that you've lost, because Martha Bruckner told me, which I told Sharon the other night, that it's not a done deal. If you really think this is the, the site...
But now you...
But again, it's a cultural difference. She said, "Have Nate come talk to me."
It's a cultural difference. Someone with a PhD doesn't understand separation of powers. You're telling me she doesn't understand how government works? In theory versus how it runs here.
I'm telling you, she told me, "Have Nate come talk to me."
I, I refuse to believe that she's that least intelligent. I'm quite convinced, as a PhD, she's very bright, and understands that this body normally makes the decision. I suppose she's just used to the perception that we don't, and which isn't true. And, you know, this is very uncomfortable to bring up tonight, and it, it's, it, if, smart thing to do would be to shut up. But I always said, "I'm gonna do what I think."
I give you that opportunity.
I always said, "I'm gonna say what I think, right or wrong. I believe I'm right." Uh, it appears to me what that's what the charter says. I was tasked to do something, and I was undermined, and I'm calling you on it.
Nate, I can't, I don't know how much clearer I can be. They s- I told them just exactly what I said, that I think it's too small. Now, does that mean you can't talk to them anymore, 'cause Matt thinks it's too small?
Would you be willing to now say, in the next two weeks, to term, to clarify your remarks to them, that it's up to the council, and whether you think it's too small or not is irrelevant?
Yeah, because I think that's the proper...
Well, then I think we ought to post, then I think we ought to postpone it.
And I told Sharon White, on Saturday night, and Martha came to me and said, "If, if the council really thinks this is the right location, have them talk to me." She says, "I don't know why they're going to my board. Why nobody bothered to come to me?" But...
Because she's the unelected bureaucrat. She's not in charge of the government.
Again, you don't have to explain it to me. I understand it.
You understand how government works, well, then follow it. The, it, it goes to the board. The board makes decisions. And she works for the board. They don't work for her.
And that's what I told her when she asked if she could talk to you directly.
So, I'm not gonna get permission to go speak to an elected member of another body, whether I'm in this chair or not. As a taxpayer, I can go talk to...
You don't need to lecture me, because...
Well, it, it kinda sounds like I have to, because you don't seem to understand it.
You don't seem to understand that I do understand.
Well, then follow it, please.
And you don't, you don't seem to understand that I have a right to an opinion when somebody asks me about the site, which I can say, "I think it's too small," but...
Yes.
But go ahead and talk to Nate.
Well, just like in my day job, however, if I'm asking an opinion about Nebraska DHHS, I'm allowed to give an opinion, but I have to preface it with, "It's not the official opinion of the organization. So do you." That's an ethical obligation you have on your part.
That was a personal opinion that was asked of me.
You, you're required to indicate it as such, under the ethics of this state. And you should know it after 20 years, and as a politician.
I just wanna wrap up what I was saying on this property.
Please, please.
Is that, based on this, even if we could get the school building, by the time we paid a demo it, and then we get the rest of this block, now, this would've taken care of all the properties except for, I believe, three on that block. Would, it, there's, uh, three houses that wouldn't have been included in these sales. So, I look at that, and I think, "All right, so, we're already, what we're looking at in price, you're already gonna be well over, you know, just trying to get these buildings, now that they've just sold." All this time, I thought maybe we'd be able to get those buildings for a lot less, because they appeared to be in very bad disrepair. Um, but evidently, we've got a, a speculator out there, somebody who believes that they're gonna be able to make go of these apartments.
Can we find out who that is? I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
We'd have to, uh, yeah, I didn't have time, 'cause they'd finally just posted the deeds.
'Cause I would like to shame them in public.
You go to Secretary of State, but you have to pay a fee to do it.
E.O. Real Estate LLC is, sometimes all they have on there, when you go to the state, sometimes all they have on there for the LLC is who the agent is. So, it's not always easy to find out. But my whole point is...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
As committed as I've been to the Washington site for years on end, I have said from the very beginning, "I cannot possibly make a decision that it's gonna cost taxpayers more money, or that we'll use up so much money that we won't have money to build the building." And, you know, just looking at this, and the fact that even if we wanted to try to get the apartment to the north, now it's pending. And that was pending at $640,000, was the list price when it went pending. So, it's just, you know, the costs are just skyrocketing on noth-, and that doesn't even include the building or the demo. So, that's where I'm at, and that's, I don't feel like I'm painted into a wall. I feel like that, you know, it, it was a time thing. You know, if we'd have been, if we'd have gotten to work on the site a year or two ago, while these properties were still, you know, not on the market or whatever, we probably could've had the money to do it, but...
And we should've done it, if we had had that discussion, and, but we didn't. It was done without our input, and that bothers me. It significantly bothers me. We, whenever we agree to buy a, a property on West Broadway, for example, regardless of where the funds may come through, we meet, as is completely legal and appropriate to meet, when you're deciding whether to buy something and for what price, in closed session, to buy property. 'Cause you, that's one of the exceptions that the public's not entitled to know at that moment, because other, just so people understand, so that it sounds like we're meeting in secret. You can meet in secret on certain limited things, and one of them is just to buy property. So, you come up with your strategy. You're negotiating, because if, if that's public information, what's your ultimate, the most you're willing to pay for it, you, as a taxpayer, would always get, uh, a very bad deal, if you knew our bargaining strategy. We do that on five- and six-figure properties quite often. I was gonna say all the time, not all the time, but a lot. We could've done it here, and I, I appreciate your argument, the hor-, in some ways, like the horse has left the barn.
Right, and when I, when you, when you say we could've done it here...
But how do we resolve this problem?
This is a project we would've had to start on a couple of years ago, to round up these properties. That's what I'm saying.
But we could've...
You know, I don't wanna twist it into making it look like we could've put an option on it. By the time that Washington came back on the table, and we directed, "Everybody, start getting us the data on this." We really wanna reconsider Washington School. These deeds were already executed, so...
And nobody's gonna give you a refundable option on those types of properties from multiple owners. It's just...
Well, maybe not, but at least then we could've tried, which would've been our right to do.
Might've gotten in trouble if I did.
Not you, I said us. If we did it together, you were authorized, just like when we do anything else with property. And so, I'm not against the fact, you, even that you did an option on Woodbury. I'm not. You just needed permission, because...
Well, we beat that horse, though. We beat that horse last time.
Well, you asked legal counsel after you did it, so that puts him in a...
No, that's absolutely untrue.
Well, then people are lying to me who told me.
Yep.
So, you're calling that my, you're calling my source in the office a liar?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
I'll deal with that tomorrow, and we'll see who's telling the truth.
Having said that, uh, Mr. White, I, I think it's, uh, it's appropriate, before we vote on a resolution that calls for the acquisition of Blank, that we resolve, uh, a couple other questions, both, or issues both posed by, by Ron Cleveland. And, and the first one, not to, um, raise the angst of my colleagues, but, but we have a, a, a complaint of open meetings violation. Has that, has that complaint been resolved yet with, with the state?
There was a meeting, uh, on the 16th to determine whether or not they're gonna actually, uh, consider it a formal, a legitimate complaint. I have, uh, provided the information regarding how that meeting, uh, came about. I understand that it was, uh, very innocent the way it occurred, but at the same time, is a technical violation. I've discussed with the, uh, representative of that office, what, what normally would be done after such a technical violation. And she's advised me that we should, immediately, should recreate the mea- meeting, which is what this council has already done. In fact, in that agenda, we pointed out the fact that we'd had the, uh, an appropriate meeting, uh, the week before, and that this was, uh, done to make the public aware of what actually transpired at that meeting.
So, is the city's position that, that, that issue has been remedied?
It has not been completely resolved. We're, we're not, not in order that way, but we've taken the steps, I think, they're gonna require of us already.
And there's really nothing else we can do until they...
If I may speak, speak...
We're gonna have a meeting this week in Des Moines, and, uh, find out what additional steps they want.
If, if I may, just in case, I think there are probably some, there's some puzzled looks. Uh, four of us, uh, met, uh, at a public meeting called by the police chief. None of us noticed, including myself, that in the Outlook calendar entry that was, that was forwarded to us, the clerk, it's quite clear, and I take the police chief, of course, at his word, and it's quite clear on the face of it, it intended to copy CC, the city clerk. As it so happens, in his version of Outlook, apparently, there, there is no CC, and on mine, sometimes I get it, sometimes I don't. Frankly, I don't know.
A meeting, meeting schedule.
The difference, yeah, okay. Uh, he, it's quite clear, he, and so, we all came to a meeting at the library to discuss, uh, if there was a way forward that all of us could agree on, uh, the, to, to talk about the election and to make it quite clear that the election was not about the location, which it was not. Quite a bit of discussion, including in the committee, was about location, which was, in retrospect, very unfortunate, because, uh, the election was about the need. I wish we would've had it before, but that's water under the bridge. We all agreed that the need, and I believe we all still think, if I may say so, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a need for a new police station. Um, in that meeting, we talked about that, and that's the meeting from which we decided to have the unprecedented press conference to all express our support for the need of a station. There were members of the public there, including, if I may say so, uh, one of our opponents in last year's election. Uh, and she contributed quite well to the meeting, if I may say, and there were other folks there, not very many. But because the public was there, um, it led me, speaking for myself, I can't read my colleagues' minds, but it led me to believe that, in fact, it had been published. If no member of the public were there, I would've asked. I think, I, I appreciate my colleague raising the question, because I think people need to understand that because a meeting happened, that technically 24 hours' notice was not given. It was a technical violation. And as a member in that meeting, I, the buck stops with us, and so it was. And we remedied it, and we're quite sorry about it. I think you, if you look at the intent of it, you'll quite see, or that, quite see that my colleagues, on whatever side of the issues here, all five of us have been quite honorable in, uh, meeting our open meetings, uh, requirements. And there's nobody more devastated than us. And speaking for myself, myself, that there was a technical violation. Steps have been in pla- put in place to make it harder for that to accidentally happen again. So, I just think you need to know that.
Is there a reason why that's coming up? Because are we bringing that back up again? Because...
Well, yeah, I wanted to get it at least out on the record, because it relates to a second matter that was raised by Mr. Cleveland.
But the first matter was out in the public, and we talked about it at this meeting, it was in the newspaper. It just feels like we're hashing up.
Well, no, but I asked about the resolution, because we didn't have, we didn't know what the status of the current state action or investigation on it was, where we were in the process.
Yeah, we did, I've got an email where he told us exactly. Yeah, I just think you're prefacing it with the accidental meeting that you didn't attend. There's something, a little more to that, because we all got an email telling us, we did the makeup meeting, this is where we're at with the state, they will review everything, and they will let us know. So I just think there's a little something to the way you're prefacing the whole conversation.
So that's what I'm asking.
Go ahead and check me.
If we go to the second item...
I know where it's going, yeah, I just think it's just interesting.
We go to the second item, the April 16th letter to the council. It asked for a couple of things. And the first one was that Mr. Cleveland asked for copies of all the contract documents that were signed by the mayor back in February. Were those provided to Mr. Cleveland?
I don't think he ever made any formal request, did he? Put something in the newspaper at your request?
No, I've got a copy of his, of his letter to the council requesting that, and it's copied to Mr. Wade. So there is a formal request on it.
Okay, I don't believe I did, I can't remember if it was...
Okay. Well, I'll provide you another copy of that, of that letter. Also, in that letter, he asked for the council to...
Is Ron here?
Huh?
Is Ron here? I don't believe so. I don't know if he came.
I don't see him.
I don't see Ron. Ron? No, I don't think he is.
I think so, too, but while you're at it, make sure you show him where the sock in the basement's at with all the money, because, you know, he insists there is.
Beg your pardon?
Mr. Cleveland. Yeah.
Are we making fun of Mr. Cleveland?
No, he actually said that, in public, at a meeting, that we had a sock of money in the, in City Hall. And we have, that was in the, yeah, that actually happened. That's not making fun, if it sounds funny, well, you know, all I can say is, that's what he said.
Okay, well, again, I was asking whether or not his requests for copies have been honored, and then he was also asking the council for action with respect to whether or not the contract action in February was appropriate. So what I'm asking from the council, I guess, is to consensus as to whether or not that's going to be discussed further, or whether or not there's consensus that we're going to ignore that, and go ahead and take a vote on tonight's resolution, notwithstanding.
Ignore what?
His concerns about whether or not it was appropriate.
Does that change whether or not it's a valid, whether or not we're gonna vote on a site tonight? Does that change the sites we have available? Do we wanna look at another site? Do we wanna continue looking at Washington? Because if we do, that's one issue. But his concern about the contract, we all got it, so I'm sure you gave it to him. It's not like he hasn't read it. There's no doubt in my mind, you would've forwarded it on to him, because you got the request, so, you know, that doesn't change.
We all got the request.
Right. And did you forward it to him?
I'm sorry?
Did you forward the contract to him?
No, I did not.
Well, why didn't you? You got the request, and you had the contract. Why would you not send it to him?
He didn't ask me for it.
Well, he did, you said we all got the request, that's what you just said.
And did you send it to him?
Well, heck, no, I didn't send it to him. This guy has been...
From the newspaper guy you gave it to?
You've given it to everybody else, why wouldn't you have given it to him?
From the media guy you gave it to?
Yeah. So all I'm saying is, I put this on here, asking everybody to waive the rules so that we could have the discussion, let the public come forward and tell us, what do you think about these sites? Because this is where we're at. This isn't about what happened before. This isn't about whether you like whether the mayor did what he should've. I don't know if he should've or not, hire a lawyer and find out. I'm telling you, on the agenda, we're looking at a site for the police station. If you, you know, why are we talking about Ron Cleveland's request for a copy of the option contract before we can deal with where the site's gonna be? Is this where we're at?
Because once we take the vote on that, then his concerns and his requests become moot.
Well, they will be moot, either way, it doesn't matter. So we put this off, you send him the contract, and I know he's probably already gotten. What does that change? We either need to find another site than the ones we're looking at, or we need to choose one we're looking at. That's all tonight is about. It's not about anything else.
In your hands, completely.
It's all up to us, where we put this. It's not up to whether or not what he did with an option has anything to do with it. Because if you'd vote tonight not to put it there, the money's back tomorrow. If you vote to put it there, then it goes towards the purchase price, Al, it makes no difference.
And I saved you what happened on that property at Washington School, I think, but, you know, shame on me, but...
It's come down to, as Mr. Watson suggested, either we vote for a site that does have merits, or we vote for a site which is a fiscal and legal impossibility.
So what else would you do?
Rendered as such.
You haven't come to any, you haven't brought forward any sites. You haven't, you know, it was obvious when we looked at them, that at the last time, the Second Avenue site, I think even you said, that's an impossibility, with the moving of all the utilities, it's crazy. What do you wanna do? Do you wanna drag this out because you're mad at the mayor?
Was that Cattlemen, I'm sorry.
That was Cattlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Do you wanna drag this out for months on end?
Thank you.
Because you're mad at the mayor, because he did something you thought he shouldn't have done? Maybe he did, maybe he didn't, I don't know. I'm just asking you. How does your revenge and retribution, because that's what that was tonight, because you brought up the accidental meeting and all that, that you just happened to not attend? That's what you're doing. So let's just all be a little bit grown up here. Let's just try to stay focused on the issue that resolution on the agenda is, are we gonna choose a site tonight? If you're not gonna, I have no problem with that, but I don't see the point of all of this garbage about how, yeah, this site won't work, but we're cornered into this site. No, you're not. Then come up with another site, and let's work on it, quit it, just let's get it done.
We can't draw this out any further, so...
No, not on your, not on all this, you did an option, you know, he can...
You can draw it out in perpetuity. The option will expire...
It's not changing anything, Al.
At the end of the month.
We need to find a site.
That is the artificial deadline. My statement that I think the site's too small at Washington, I can't imagine cleared the deal for anybody, but maybe it did, I'm sorry if it did. And that was just a personal opinion, based on a need for five acres, and being told it's a 2.9 acre site. I thought this body would look at it and say to themselves, nice idea, but it won't work, because it's not a big enough property. And so when they asked me about it, I said, I think it's too small, it will never come before you. Because when you get to looking at the detail, the council's gonna say, unfortunately, 2.9 acres doesn't cut the mustard.
I'm sorry to correct the record, because that was in closed session. We talked about the fact that it was under the ideal. I believe that was the word used, or similar to it. But yet, I seem to remember those of us, and I'll only single out myself, if they wanna say something, they can, said that that wasn't a deal breaker for us. We wanted to proceed, hence, I was delegated by my colleagues to go try to see if we could set up a meeting with two of us, so that would meet all laws, and two of them, so they would meet all laws, and we would come up with an alternative to see if it would work. That was it. It may not work, I'll grant you the odds were not in its favor, but that's not the point. The point is, it was sabotage, because you wanted a particular...
Sabotage implies intentional.
Yes, I mean it.
Yeah, well, then...
We were...
You should be ashamed of yourself, then.
Sir, in my activities, I've been nothing but above board with you, and indeed, with the quotes.
Really, really?
Yes, yes, sir. If you've got something where I've been dishonorable, say it or withdraw it.
I'm not withdrawing it, and I'm not gonna belittle myself by saying it.
Well, I think we can all read that one.
Question for, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Question for Chief Carmody, and that is, for all the documents that we've been provided for discussion, including the documents that were at, in the executive session last session, there have been requests made that everything that was provided to us for consideration be posted online. In fact, I think I requested that twice, has that been done?
This information was not posted online, because it was in executive session, and I was waiting for the outcome of tonight's meeting. That was a request I remember.
So the documents...
The other information regarding the site summaries from April, yes, they've been posted online.
What, the discussions as of April?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But what we were considering in executive session has not been posted, because it was in executive session?
That's what I understood the direction of council was, how can we post it publicly without...
If we can waive it, and I thought we did.
We didn't.
I thought we did, but maybe I misremembered. Maybe I misremembered.
Well, I apologize if I got it wrong.
I don't know.
I was still...
I thought, I thought we agreed that the public could see it, but maybe I'm mistaken. I don't have 100%, I don't have 100% recollection of that, so I could be wrong.
Because I was still kind of curious, it was on the study session agenda, and I thought we were going to discuss elements of that during the open study session, and everything was then moved...
Councilman, I have all the information here right now. If you want me to put it up on the screen, we can do that, or we can do it tonight at the meeting. And I have the documents, again, to share with everyone. So if that's what council prefers, we can do that. We can show them all the numbers, and how the sites compare to each other, side by side.
For which ones, the final two?
I have everything from the first 10 sites that were looked at, and actually, these are the ones that were turned down, plus all the other ones that were documented throughout the process, Cattlemen's, Avenue B, and Washington School, and Woodbury.
But to be fair to the Washington site, I think, and I'm not implying anything, I want, based on today's discussion, to be very clear, that, I'm not implying you did anything improper, that I believe you thought the direction was to not, and somebody correct me if my memory's wrong, because it could be, was to not do, in my words, an in-depth analysis on the Washington site, but on, but for various, for reasons that you thought we were no longer considering it. I seem to recall there was a fair amount of due diligence, actually quite a bit, about Cattlemen, which I think we've been calling Second Avenue, as well as the other one off the Viaduct, and I forget the name. And then we talked about how we wanted more, am I remembering this correctly? And then we got some more afterwards, because obviously couldn't do it at the moment we asked for it. Was it in executive session? That I don't remember.
Yeah.
Please remind me.
And we had an email.
Was it? Was it? Okay. I just don't have a good memory on that.
Yeah, it was in executive session.
Okay, alright.
And he provided an email, like, a few days before, with the outline of the cost.
I think the reason we didn't go public with it is because we wanted to get verification first, that it would even be available from...
To that point, indeed.
And so I think we had decided as a group not to put it in the papers, to be fair to the school board, to let them go first, before we made it.
Yep, agreed, agreed.
That's what I recall, yeah.
But we did have the information on the other locations, that wasn't so impacted, and we ended up doing our deliberations, our ranking on all those sites in executive session, which was, of course, by definition, outside of the public.
Which was appropriate, would we agree on that? I think it's quite clear that there was nothing wrong about discussing that in executive session. That was actually, I think the point is, is that's how we should've, in my view, done it all, including the option, but... Because it's acquisition of land, I don't think there's anything inappropriate about having had that discussion.
No, and I didn't mean to imply that it was.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, okay.
It just kinda goes to, I guess, the desire to make this process as transparent to the public as possible.
I would like to see if tonight, if we're gonna vote on this final site tonight. I mean, and I think that's what we need to decide on. If we, as a council, don't feel happy with Woodbury, if that's what we're gonna vote on, because even though I would agree, maybe some things have went wrong along the way, maybe it didn't go exactly as we would've hoped. Whether or not it was legal or not legal, I don't even know that that matters at this point.
Get an attorney and have him charge me.
Well, no, but I'm saying, beyond all of that, we still have done a lot of research.
I am one, strangely enough.
We really have, looked at a lot of different sites. All things that have happened outstanding, a lot of sites have been looked at. As much as we would like, maybe somewhere different, it just seems that Woodbury keeps coming to the top. I mean, we can do it longer, we can wait two more weeks and talk to the school board, but now it's looking like that's probably not even viable, unfortunately. So I hate to keep dragging this out unless we really have a plan in place.
Can we, as a...
It's a solid plan, but if we are gonna...
No, hey, you're out of order, Bruce, you're out of order.
But if we are gonna vote on it tonight, I do think we should put up what we did do since the, you know, the other three sites. So the public, that show up, can see, we did do more research. We did not just say it was Woodbury. I would, that's what I would personally like, is just to show we did do.
Would we, in conjunction with that, Melissa, have anything to say with what the sense of the council was as to how it was handled? If we were to go that route, I would want it clear that we do not condone the way it was handled.
I mean, yeah, I don't think that's, I have no issue with that, I mean...
Because I don't, do you?
In the interest of the police station, and the fact that we know there's a need for this, we know that's what's best for our community. I would like to just find a way to get past what has happened up until this point, like I said, whether or not...
And as part of that, moving forward, I would want it to be very clear, the assurance, I would want my colleagues' assurance, that as we do these things in the future, that whoever sits in the mayor's chair is on notice, that that won't work again. I'd want that assurance. Because it shouldn't work this time, and maybe it's too far to unring the bell, and maybe we're stuck, ratified...
It's not too far to unring the bell.
Well, the well's been poisoned. And, you know, at this point, if we don't, if we continue to condone these, these, these cutting us out of the process, and this is not the first time, attempts have been made, and some successful, that we've got to put our foot down, it's for the sake of these chairs. It has nothing to do with who we are, or who the mayor is. It's the sake of the prerogative of these chairs of the council, that for the sake of precedent, for the future, that that's gotta stop.
And I think that was the point that Mr. Cleveland was asking to be made, so, that's why I raised that.
Though, with the greatest respect to Mr. Cleveland, he also had allegations that we'd had lots of illegal meetings, and I will say that he has clearly been misinformed, and I'm sorry he has. And that's how I will express it.
I understand, but, you know, notwithstanding how you feel about everything that he has to say, you know...
Indeed.
You know, he's still made, made a request that deserves at least the courtesy of some sort of response.
I don't disagree with that. You should get it.
You know, honestly, would it, once it came out to us, there's no doubt in my mind you would've sent it to him, so, you know, whether or not it was considered a formal request at that point, I don't think anybody has a problem, we all have it, there's no reason he shouldn't have it, so...
And we give it out to the media.
I would imagine it's an innocent error, it's something that ought to be, procedures ought to be tightened up to ensure it doesn't happen in the future.
And the best way to handle it, maybe, is it comes through the clerk, and that's Marcy and Jody are there to help us. Because we are, we all do have full-time jobs or busy jobs. And, you know, Marcy and Jody are always so willing, maybe we, if we get a request like that that they see from here on out, they could just double-check, you know, and that it gets sent out, or something, we could come up with an easy process.
I think we already had that.
Is there not a Freedom of Information application that needs to be filed?
It's not required, you can make a norm.
But even if it was, we wouldn't necessarily require, because we would've given it to him. So maybe if it's something that...
No, but I mean, if he wanted it, that's what I would think he would file.
You can have a form, but you can't make him use it.
No, but maybe we just need to, as a council, come up with how we want things like that.
I regret that he didn't get it, I assumed that he would've gotten it, but we just need to tighten up our procedures, because I agree, he should get it, if he requested it's public document.
I just don't know what that really had to do with our vote tonight. I think that we're losing focus, and I think it's due to there's some obvious anger by certain members about things that happened in the past, and that's, has nothing, and I get that, I understand, you know, if that's your belief, then fine, but, you know, we're getting derailed on the fact that we've gotta stay focused. And when I say stay focused, I mean on, are we gonna make a decision? If we're not, you know, I can tell you that I don't think anybody's been bringing more information to the chief or anybody else. You know, I don't think that anybody's taken the time that we've had to investigate this, to go out and do any, I mean, I brought what I can bring you, but that's the only reason I even knew about it, was because that's, I found it on the MLS when I was doing an investigation on another property. I don't think anybody's out there trying to find a better site, work on more than what we've been given, so why would you just keep dragging this out further and further and further, just because you're mad?
We have consensus, we certainly all have consensus on the need for a station. I think that's still true, is that still true?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
I think voters decided that.
Well, indeed, indeed. But we can always decline to do it. I think that'd be very unwise, and I'm not talking politically, I just think that would be inappropriate. Okay, so we all agree there's a need. Do we all, do we all agree, in the council, that we should have been a part of the option process, and going forward, that we insist on being, making the decisions that apply to us? Do we agree on that?
I'm gonna preface this, Nate, with, and it's only because of my background and what I do.
Okay.
And only because I've been in real estate my whole life.
Sure.
I would like to tell you I trust everybody on this bench. We, you know, for the most part, we all work together. But I can tell you that I go to meetings all the time where it is said at the meeting, this is highly confidential. If word gets out that this is being worked on, speculators are gonna, and this is on private deals, speculators are gonna come in, and we're gonna be, you know, out of the loop on this property. I would like to believe that each and every one of us would have left an executive meeting and not said anything. But you don't know.
I don't think that was done until there was a public meeting.
Well.
I don't know.
Announcing those three locations.
So, I don't know.
It was two weeks prior, is, because the meeting was on a Tuesday, the negotiations commenced the previous week, about eight or nine days previous.
I'd have to see what came out of the, uh.
So that's, so that rationale doesn't hold with.
So is that, was that the meeting? No, was, was there a meeting before then that gave the three locations?
You said it was, you mentioned, and.
I know it was a public meeting.
I know, and I looked back at what you said yesterday. I looked back, and you said it was the night we had our special meeting. That was that Tuesday, whatever, off the top of my head, I forget the date now. I want to say it's in March.
That was the meeting when they showed all the locations, but was there a prior meeting to that?
Well, that isn't, but that wasn't which, wasn't the reason you get it.
Well, and, and boy, I sure gave you the, the benefit of the option when you said, you know, my memory isn't always the best, and so.
Because I'm trying to say that I'm trying to be very, very clear that, of what I can say distinctly, and you'll have to forgive the legal speak, but what I'm saying is, on those points, your rationale doesn't line up with the contemporaneous facts.
But it does, if you go back and watch.
If I were to cross-examine you, you would lose horribly, because your, your story doesn't fit.
If you go back and watch the meeting where this all came up.
I did, yesterday.
Where it all came up about the option.
Yes, I did.
I recall, and I'd have to go back and watch it too, but Nate, the way I recall that was, is that the mayor said, I knew they were getting ready to have this meeting, it was gonna be out in the public. And once it was out in public, we'd have speculators. So he's not saying he put the option on it after that meeting, because he says, when you bring it up, that he did it prior to the public meeting.
He said it was within a day or two of the meeting, and I asked a follow-up question, and it was that special meeting, right? Because we, we asked, I asked about it a couple of weeks later, when I heard it had been done earlier.
Oh, you're saying you think it was more, it was more than a couple of days then, is what you're saying?
It was like nearly two weeks previous.
Have you asked for the minutes from that committee's meeting to see if they had already narrowed it down?
Well, since, I don't know if I have a, a copy of every meeting they had.
Yeah, that's what I would wonder.
I, I mean, they were supposedly meeting in public, but I don't know that.
According to the signed contract documents, negotiations began as, as early as four February.
Which is nine days.
Four February.
He's speaking to it in European, or military.
No, but I mean, I'm just trying to remember the dates back.
Yeah, that's.
What four February it was.
What it, what appeared.
Alls I know is there were three sites selected. As I told this body, one site was Google, which wasn't for sale. I tried to negotiate that property from them in lieu of some building permit fees that had expired. The other site was Bill Sapp's property. I remember saying that Bill Sapp is one of the most astute businessmen in the metro area, and nobody's gonna get over on Bill Sapp. The other one's owned by a nonprofit entity that, uh.
You said that on March 13th. I recall the date now. That was the Tuesday special meeting. That occurred in study session to a certain degree, but it was specific either in study session. I looked yesterday just again.
No, I know.
Uh, to try to recollect, and that was the date of the special meeting.
And I'm sure I did it before a council meeting, because time was of the essence, and so.
Well, that isn't what you said, though, and that's another reason why these things need to be done properly.
Well, in order to do it at a council meeting, would have had to wait till the next council meeting.
You could have called a special session.
All right.
We do want other things for business. Why can't we do it for the public?
It is done, and you know what?
No, I can't condone it.
That still doesn't change what we're doing tonight. And so what I would say is, is that, yes, in a perfect world, I would definitely agree with you.
We have to start following the rules.
Well, I checked with legal counsel and was told that I was following the rules.
That, you said even at the meeting, you didn't even have to let us know you were doing it. That can't possibly be what a member of the bar told you.
And city code 1.10.040 sub six says that you, you may sign contracts, quote, "when authorized by council," or, by, by the council. Not legal council, the city council.
And legal.
So what do you guys, uh?
What I'm saying is I want to postpone it to do it right.
How would you do it right? What are we gonna do?
I need an assurance that the mayor is going to make quite clear to the school board that this is not his decision, and that he spoke in air.
I told you I'd do that.
And he did, in his fairness.
I didn't, I didn't tell you I spoke in air, but I told you I'd make it very clear to him, because I don't think I spoke in air.
I would like to be, well, then I would like to see what you're gonna say, because I'd like to see what you're gonna say.
So my question is, do you think that then, if you could talk to the school board members?
Yeah, Eric, it's on the record. Go ahead and talk to Nate.
I think it would, when they, they, for example, are set, we're setting a public hearing tonight on half, 550,000 in sales tax money.
I understand, but I mean, do you think it's gonna change anything about the ability to, for us to put the police station here?
I do.
Knowing what you know about what the rest of the block would cost us.
I think it's much more difficult to undo, but I can't fix, I, there's only so much I can do to fix the improper things.
I know that you wanna make it right. I'm just asking you, do you believe this is a site we're gonna, are we holding it up out of a principle, or are we holding it up because you truly believe we can build it here?
Both. And that's my honest belief, and I have to just ask you to trust me on that, because I don't lie. I'm not always right, but I don't, no, I know. I know, I know you're not, but I just want to be very clear.
I'm asking you where you think we can get the rest of the money.
I, I believe, I, well, we had, I don't really, that would be something, but publicly, there are potential third parties who.
They were very clear with me, not for that kind of cash.
Well, it depends on what kind of cash and how, what exactly you're asking for. A lot of it comes down to whether you, you're meeting certain goals of organizations.
I did. I was very clear. Would you, how much could we expect, and I talked to board members.
Sure.
How much could we expect that you might fund light removal?
And what number did you get?
On that West Block, less than a million.
I got a million.
And a million dollars won't even touch.
Well, it would if we had bought options, if we'd had this discussion.
But we didn't, but we didn't, Nate. I'm trying to get us back to where we are today.
Then we can, then we send the inspectors there, because those ought to be condemned, and then.
We can't, you know, that's a legal nightmare.
No, it's not illegal.
You're just gonna go condemn properties you never condemned before, because now we want them.
No, we ought, we ought to, we sought to start following, we've had public complaints about them. I think it's appropriate.
Well.
We do it with others. When people point out problems with properties, we go enforce it.
Well, it's on the agenda. You know what? Let's just move forward, get it, you know, what we have and what we looked at. I, I'm with Melissa on that. And then I guess we'll just have to see what comes up in the way of motions and votes. That's all I know to do at this point. I, I don't.
I don't know either, frankly.
I don't think that, you know, short of, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how to fix what's happened in the past. I just want to see what we can do.
I would need a, I, I would need that, I would need, in essence, a censure on that, that that was inappropriate without a condition. That would fix it, because that would ensure going forward, I'd point to that the next time he tries to do that, and tell him no. Because so far, I've not had much luck.
Dick, did we ever?
I'm tired of being put, put behind the eight ball on projects and looking bad to people.
Did you give us an opinion that?
What projects, Nate?
We asked you about this wayback.
You really want me to list them?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I, you know, you said I couldn't hire a chief of staff, that's the only thing I can think of, and found out that wasn't right.
Yes, and then you added other positions, and then raised your office budget by 50%.
Because I hired a chief of staff.
And then how much was the salary increase this year? Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head. It was an increase.
It was double digits, wasn't it?
It, uh, as a percentage, probably, yeah.
Yes, it was, wasn't it? And you hired additional other staff.
But you approved the budget, I don't know.
The budget's a guideline, it's not an appropriating vehicle. I don't know why I have to prove this to somebody who's been in government for 20 years. It's the guideline, it's not the appropriations. So, so you asked for an example, I gave one. Do you want another one, or is one enough?
Well, here, I've got a budget to manage my department with, that was approved by the council, and I appropriate the money within the budget
No.
as I see fit.
No.
Yes.
Bills appropriate money, budgets are a guideline. They don't appropriate. You need an appropriations vehicle.
Then I guideline the money as.
I can't believe this. I would think after 20 years, you would know it.
All right, well, wait, hold on, Dick, real quick, just to give us, I don't think we're getting anything done here, so.
Come on, I want Dick, though, to give us his.
Well, you asked for an example. You asked for an example.
That's not a good example. It's a poor example, which is why.
How about hiring the police chief, and we didn't get all the necessary information to the last minute, and then, well, when he had already put an offer on his house, we were basically held a gun over our head, or to go for it.
I don't remember that. I remember going in.
Well, I don't want to influence your decision, but he's already closed on a house when we were still looking at possibilities. That wasn't improper?
I don't remember that.
I, I have the authority to hire any department head I want to hire.
Not without council approval.
You.
And you held it over our head. Yes, because we were only given one choice in the end. You asked for an example, I've given you another one. Do you want another one?
Now, every.
All right, then we can move on.
Every department head, have, have you come with multiple, have I come with multiple choices for every department head?
You came with an option that, despite his imminent qualifications, which of course there are several, the way you handled that process, you remember there was quite a bit of press at the time, was not proper. I told you that at the time. You said that you would work things better into the future. You have not. Today's exhibit A to that. It's actually probably about exhibit J.
Probably double, triple Z, I don't know what the hell.
It's triple what?
Z, probably, I guess.
No, it's not that many goodness. But you asked for an example. I, I'm saying that I want something where that stops. People have got, started to get this impression that we work for you. You sat in this chair for 18 years. You know that our job is.
I did a pretty damn good job of it, Nate.
Well, I would think you'd learn that we have to stand for our positions and advocate the best we can on issues, and to be undermined behind the scenes, because we have day jobs, and we can't go around and say things to people, left and right on things, is improper. It's improper.
And I certainly
And I need you to stop it.
Don't ever remember saying to you, you need to hire this police chief, because he's already bought a house here.
Well, I'm sorry you don't remember that, and I'm sorry you said that to me as an aside, because I can't prove it. I guess you're gonna have to call me a liar. You already have.
Well, I don't know that I've done that. I've tried not to do that.
Can we go, yeah.
The way I understood the way this came down, is that the mayor was negotiating an option. He had, and he stated his reasons. He came to me and wanted to know if the conditions that were being placed in that option essentially left the gate to city and out, no matter what. And it was conditioned upon council approval, it was conditioned on voter approval, and there, you know, there was, just for any reason, the city could say no. There was a requirement that 25,000 be put in escrow. And held in trust. And, and let me back up on that. Without some consideration, without the city taking some action, you don't really have a binding contract. And it's questionable, the way that's, all the conditions are worded, if it's, if that, if the owner of the property really wanted out of that, they could holler, foul, no, no consideration, no agreement.
Do you understand what that means?
I do.
Now.
That means he came up with a deal. It's not a binding deal.
This is actually in my.
Oh, is it?
What Matt allowed under this agreement was to place 25,000 dollars in op, or in escrow. That was the, the limits of our obligation. Anytime thereafter, either on his own whim, on the council's whim, on the voter's whim, that 25,000 could be pulled back. We could tell him we were no longer in it.
Do you know if we were told at the time that this was being contemplated before it was done?
You were not, you were not.
If the council were retold that this was being done.
You were not. You were not.
I'm asking if you.
Did, was the council aware of this, when I was being asked this?
Yeah.
I, I got the impression, no, because I'd never seen it on any agenda or anything.
And when we talk about buying property other places, we have executive sessions about it, and then the council, or Don Gross, comes to us and says, I'm thinking, offering X. What's your feelings about that? What room do you want us, give us to maneuver? Were we given that here? As far as you know.
I, as far as I don't know. Now, and I, I will also take myself as an example. I have gone out, after executive sessions, where we've talked about progress, and I've gone out and negotiated agreements, and conditioned on very similar things, council subsequent approval. And I'll bring that back to council, you say yea or nay. The difference between this situation and my situation is, under the code, the mayor is given, has actually the duty and responsibilities to negotiate all agreements for the city.
But we have to approve.
But at that point, there was nothing yet to approve.
But at this point, tonight, we're faced with an option where, what if I don't like the purchase price? How do I change it? I've all, at this late game, I.
At this point, you counteroffer.
At this, it's kind of late in the game, isn't it, to go to Sharon's point, I think. It's kind of late. If we were involved early on, like we are when we're spending 100,000 on a property, or more likely, 400,000 on a property on West Broadway, we, we have that input at the time. So we know the limits, we know the upper, this is what we want to start with, here's our strategy, or a lot of times we give you carte blanche, or whoever, ability to negotiate, because you know how to do that, obviously, as a lawyer. But we say, here's our maximum, here's our, what I'm saying is, in this case, on something so momentous as this, we weren't given that. And I'm saying I don't like it. And, and so I'm faced with a situation, I think Sharon's quite right, we're faced with a situation where we might not be able to unring the bell. But, and, and I was asked for other examples of prior, and I named two. He doesn't much like them, but that's fine. I named two, we disagree about them, we have, fair enough. But I'm just tired of it happening. Because I want to, and I've, I've taken a stand now publicly, because I'm tired of it happening. And if we keep pushing it through like this, it's gonna keep happening, and I'm tired of it.
I understand what you're saying. I just wanna, I, it's like, gosh, I know that we still have to make a decision, we still have to make a decision, and I don't know.
We do, unfortunately, we're right.
You know, I do understand where, I understand you're angry, and I understand you're tired of it.
Yes.
But I understand that we, it doesn't remove our obligation to either come up with a site that we want to put it on.
Mm-hmm.
Or put it on a site that something happened with early on, that you're not happy with. I'm just trying to bring us back to the point that.
I would need a censure.
It's either gonna go here, or it's either gonna go there.
Yeah.
Or we're not gonna build it. I mean, there are, there are.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna go through with it tonight, my point is, I want an unqualified censure, because I want it publicly in the record, that we do not condone that, and will not condone, we will not entertain it in any future deal going forward, where we.
And you can make that motion, and it can go for a vote. That's where we'll be. I mean, there's nothing.
If that weren't to pass, I would, I would move to postpone tonight, just to be very frank, because I understand you wouldn't, but.
I would only move to postpone.
I'm just being very frank.
I would only move to postpone if it was because we hope to get another site. I'm not gonna use the police department
I don't think it's using the police.
as a pawn in retribution for something you're unhappy about, Nate.
No, it's.
And that's, that's where I draw the line. I mean, I know you're mad, but what you're saying is, without a censure on him, you would want to postpone it.
Why are you against the censure if it lets it go through?
I'm not against the censure. I didn't say I was.
I thought you had conditions, okay, I misunderstood you. I thought you wanted conditions.
I have said from the beginning, I've got a lawyer that says it was okay, it told him, you know, that he could do that. It's your opinion, he couldn't do that.
He shouldn't have.
I would like that point clarified, Dick, because you said that, that he came to you and consulted with you about that question.
About the agreement.
Correct.
Whether or not it was.
Yep, and I want to ask you a question that I have asked you previously. And that question was, did he come and consult with you before or after the contract was signed?
Just that one time, the, the one issue is what we talked about.
Yes.
That was, that was our only discussion early on.
Was that before or after the contract was signed?
Before it was signed. It was before it was signed. Because actually, the number that was on that, that form I looked at was higher, than we ultimately, we ended up acquiring the property.
Where the option.
So negotiations had commenced, that, that if they had accepted an offer of his, there would have been a contract prior to him talking with you. Is that fair to say? If they hadn't countered.
Nothing was signed.
Yeah.
Well, they, but it doesn't matter if it's unsigned. You have a deal. If you pretend an offer.
There were offers that counteroffers signed.
Wait a minute, I went to business law class, and, and if it was, if it was under, yeah, if it's under a certain dollar amount, which, uh, 25, 100 dollars, you can't have a contract without a signature, especially for that dollar amount.
That's a contract for goods under the UCC, and this is not a contract for goods.
That's why the first contract that I sent out, when you were asking for copies of this, it was on escrow, because that's the only one I had.
I'm looking at a signature right here dated to, to February.
Talking about real estate, it's under a different code.
You know, here's the thing, though. I think that, you know, if you need a censure in order to move forward with a vote.
Throw me up, I'm ready.
On a location.
I need this to stop.
Pull the yardarm.
I understand you need it to stop, but that one thing doesn't have anything to do.
Yes, it does, because.
With whether or not we're gonna build a police station on either this site or that site.
Yes, it does, because he's tailor-made it to his chosen outcome, and I'm tired of him overriding.
I had nothing to do with the outcome. I, I was not involved in the meetings. It was a citizens' meeting, the citizens', yeah, well, I don't care what you believe, Nate, because you're not gonna believe anything I'm gonna tell you, but that.
At this point, I have difficulty.
I was not in a single meeting, one meeting, other than as an observer. I gave no verbal input to anybody at all.
It's a very well-chosen phrasing. Did you have any representatives or delegates in those meetings?
I did not pick the team.
No, that was a yes or no. Did you have any delegates or representatives in those meetings?
To the best of my knowledge, no, but.
So your chief of staff wasn't in those meetings?
She's saying yes.
Well, how did I know that if you didn't?
Well, because I don't know what meetings there were initially. Melissa was in a meeting.
All right, I don't have any more questions.
Melissa, I don't have no more questions.
Well.
Melissa was in.
Just embarrassing you.
It is a little embarrassing, Nate.
Well, yes, it is embarrassing.
Melissa was in, on the committee, and Lynn Branigan, I think, was on the committee, Sharon, and then at some point, they, they selected a site. Melissa was in, on the committee, and Lynn Branigan, I think, was on the committee, Sharon. And then at some point, they selected a site committee that met that I didn't, wasn't involved in. And I wasn't involved-
Which your representatives were. And when they're there on behalf of the mayor, you don't think when they speak that it carries a gravitas to it, is there, as a representative, apparent or actual representative of yours? Really? Why are they there, then? I just don't buy it. I mean, you don't send people to meetings if not for a reason.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't speak to what happened in the meeting.
So you sent people to meetings and they never came back?
I can speak. I was at all the meetings.
Yes. And you're one of his delegates, yes.
And Wendy was there, too, for some of them. She never spoke to them. She didn't provide any input. And I explained throughout the process that the only input I provided was when I was asked, or when something came up and they wanted a question addressed. We did not direct them. In fact, I've been very transparent throughout the process.
The thirty-one criteria were come up by the committee?
Pardon me?
The thirty-one criteria were come up by the committee?
No, the thirty-one criteria-
So you did direct-
Subject matter experts.
So they did direct the people?
They, that's why we hired the experts, council.
All right. Thank you. You just contradicted yourself. This is too easy.
I just wanna move, I just, I really-
Let's move on because they're gonna keep, they need to get their story straight, and they won't, so.
So, um-
I think the bottom line, and I get it.
Can we call a question or something?
Yeah, I think the bottom line we need to-
Not in a meeting, so no.
That's a proper procedure, Dick.
We're not in a meeting, so no.
Study session, it's loose conversation.
Right. And I, I mean, you can't ask us, Nate, at a study session to all agree to something you're gonna bring a motion to tonight that's not on the agenda. If you, if we're gonna stay with protocol, then you're asking me to say something in a study session, and that's, I hesitate to do that because you and I know-
Mm-hmm.
The council's not supposed to have consensus on a motion you're gonna bring later.
No, we can do that. We're in public.
I don't think you-
We can decree to anything.
And it's not on the agenda.
We're not voting on it. That's why I want to postpone it so it can be on the agenda, to clarify. You're right. It needs to be on the agenda, which is why it can be postponed. It's still within the option, which I do not accept. But whether you accept it or not, it's irrelevant because-
Do you want to cancel the option and just hope for the best?
Yeah, you can just do it. I mean, careful of the option.
Well, that's, we did it for the one he wanted, but not the ones, because we weren't in the loop again.
All right, well, but we're still where we are.
But you're bringing up something you said. You don't, you want to stick tonight, what I want tonight, what I'm suggesting, is postponing it so that we can have that vote first, and then we can vote on this. I need him to stop it before I have any assurance that he's going to do it, because this is at least the fourth or fifth one that I can think of off the top of my head.
And you-
And you and I have complained about it. It's time we do something about it.
You and I have complained about it.
I believe we have, yes.
I think on the option thing from-
Not on the option, but in general about this. You and I have complained about it. I've complained-
About the site.
Well, in general about how we do things.
I just want to be really careful here.
At the site, yes, but also the way I have expressed to you for the two years here about how we're doing things under the new administration. And I don't seem to recall you disagreeing with me.
As far as-
We need to start following, he needs to start following the rules.
Nate, now, come on. I don't remember having that conversation with you.
He didn't quite say it that far. He talked about how, he's new, and he needs to come up to speed, and he needs to learn how to do these things. We didn't have that discussion.
If you're talking about year one, I don't know. If it was about, was it about the chief of staff thing?
Yes, yes.
So that was a long time ago. I mean, I'm just not gonna dredge into this. Well-
Well, I just want to stop.
What I've told you is, if these things, you know, if that happened-
It did.
And I've always prefaced it with, especially with this thing about the mayor saying, don't, you know, to forget it, don't work on that site. If that happened, you shouldn't have done that.
Well, he says he said, he said, don't, he said, it's too small. You did say you agreed with that.
I agreed with you that if he says, "Don't look into the site," because it's too small.
Well, he didn't quite, he inferred it.
But that's what you told me, though.
I didn't say, "Don't look into the site."
I said, "In effect," he said. And then I said, I believe I followed it with, "In effect," he said, "Don't do it. The site's too small."
I thought you said, he said, "The site's too small," so I said it. But it doesn't matter, because you're right, that would be wrong to do, and I've agreed with you from the beginning on that.
You have. That's all I said.
But what I'm asking you for is for you to at least, when you're talking about things have to be a certain way-
Mm-hmm. The law, yeah.
And you say that finding a site for the police station is a separate issue from the censorship because-
No, you'd have to do it as a separate vote, I think. Otherwise, how do you vote?
It is a separate vote. And that's why I'm asking you-
Because they're two subjects, yeah.
You can still censure him if that's what you choose to do.
I'm not comfortable going forward and seeing that this will be done appropriately, and future things will be done appropriately, if it's not of record that we, as a body, do not condone the way it's been done.
I think you can do that. I just don't think you have to hold the police station progress hostage with it.
If I have everyone's assurance they would support the censure, then I wouldn't need to have that vote first.
Well, then, why don't you, well, we're not gonna have enough time. I just, I want you to-
That takes a vote.
Draft up something that, the way you would word that censure, before I tell you that I could do that.
Well, and then we'll get into a negotiation as to the terms, and not-
No, no. I would just tell you whether I would, whether I would support your motion or not.
The council does, the council does not condone the taking of the option and the keeping of the council out of the loop on this important decision. Period. That would be my, that would be my motion.
I would agree. I told Matt that the time he did it. I said, I think it was right to do it because of the business, the business nature.
We would have all agreed with it if we had been actually consulted per the charter.
So he didn't tell me. I'm not happy with that. And I told him that at the meeting.
Yes.
But I would have agreed with it had he told me.
I would have, had you done it appropriately, yes.
And I, I told him that at the meeting.
And like I say, this is not the first time, so I'm tired of it happening. That's all I want. And then on this one, that'll mean that we don't have that. As we move forward on other projects, I hope, then, that the precedent of that will be that when it's in an area the mayor doesn't personally want it, he will back off because it's not his role to micromanage our selection. It's not. That's what he did here.
All right. But see, here's, that's why I'm glad.
Yes, you did.
Oh, I did not.
But your statement, so what you want to move forward, what you want to say-
What I want him to do is do his job, not ours.
No, I know. I understand that. But what you just said to us was, say that statement one more time.
I would have to have it read back.
The council isn't in favor of-
I made it, I made it specific, yes.
Of him not letting us know about it.
Right. So that's all you want.
Which I'd want the precedent, the precedent of that is that in any future actions in which we are supposed to be involved, he'll follow the rules. That's the precedent. It's a specific example to meet the general principle.
Yeah.
To be clear. So if in future, for example, we want something someplace he doesn't want it, he won't do that, or we've all agreed in principle that we, no matter what box we're put in, he caused it, and we're not gonna condone it anymore. That's what I want, because I'm not condoning breaking the law. He was supposed to inform us, and he didn't. And I don't like the position he's put us in, and I don't think any of us up here do. We might phrase it differently, and I phrase it perhaps in the most strident terms, fair enough. But I didn't hear anybody up here defending the way he did it and continues to do it. And it's time we say that publicly and hold him to it rather than just in private.
Nate, I would just say that as far as being painted into a corner, you know that I have said from the beginning, if this Washington school site works-
It would if.
We will get the building. There's no way. We would not find a way to work with the school board to get this building.
We won't know now, will we, because it was interfered with?
No. I would, I would be voting for this tonight if it wasn't for these other sales. So I'm trying to be very clear with you that I don't feel painted into a corner because of that. I feel painted into the corner because these other properties sold.
Well, earlier this year, when apparently, as we got, we got it in study sessions, the first we learned about many of these details, which is the MO of how we get things. We tend to get them in study sessions for the first time with the public. By the time we found out about this train leaving the station, if we had been involved earlier in it, we would have been involved earlier than April, because we didn't start thinking of the police station in April. We would have been involved, you have been a passionate supporter of Washington School for years.
I have.
As have I. You've been a bigger supporter of it than I have. I, I wanted other areas. You and I have no doubt, you passionately would have said, with your experience, that maybe we ought to look when the mayor says we'll look at options there. That is smart, business sense. We would have, I have no doubt you, with your expertise, would have brought up, maybe we ought to do it on these. I have no doubt-
But they had our, the committee, not the, you know, and I just want to be very clear. The committee ruled that site out.
Well, but ultimately, the original, what went to the committee was a result of what was presented to them. It wasn't like it was made that very same day.
Well, I will support your censure that he's supposed to get us to approve him signing contracts. So if that's what it is, I-
But I need that before the vote, because-
I'm saying I'm fine with it. Roger said he's fine with that. If that's what it is, it's just saying that-
You said you needed to know we would support you. And here's the thing, we're gonna vote on something tonight, one way or the other. We're either gonna vote to postpone it. We're gonna vote on a site.
Well, I want it very clear, though, that the precedent going forward in the future is the general principle that when we want to do something, he's got to stay involved, and he's got to stay within the legal bounds of his job.
And you've been very clear.
But I want it to be clear that we all agree that.
I do agree. I don't think anybody here does, and I just don't wanna-
Well, I'm not sure he does, but that's why he needs to-
But he doesn't have to.
Exactly. And that's, that's the point.
And I would tell you that I felt that I was within the legal bounds of my role because I checked with the city attorney before I signed that option agreement, Nate Watson, and so-
Before you started negotiating the option agreement?
Oh, we have other department heads that negotiate before.
But he's the mayor. He has apparent authority.
Which apparently, from what the city attorney tells me, I'm the chief negotiator.
Yes, to the things we direct you, as Al read the city term.
But I think let's add this, just to move along. Let's add the language that you want when the time comes, and then we-
Fair enough.
Go forward. And I think we should show the public that what extra research we did between now and then, so that they can see. Because we did, we did try to find another site, and I think they need to do that.
And I think they need to see that this one didn't go through. It was meddled with. Now, it may not have succeeded. Yes, it was meddled with.
I'm not saying it wasn't meddled with.
That's why, why else are we censuring him if it wasn't meddled with?
Because of the option, Nate. That's what you were saying.
But, but the whole point of it is, he's meddling in the affairs that he does not, the option is the example of the meddling in the affairs.
Right. But you gotta be really careful to keep the facts straight here. I really want to wrap this up, and I'm sure people really want to go home. I'm just, I want it to be very, very clear-
We paid them very well enough. Thank you.
This is gonna, this cost, these costs have something to do with the problem with this site.
Which we could have fixed had we followed the law.
Okay.
And we didn't.
Okay, so when you approved the agenda tonight, based upon what I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing, you wish to amend it to have a ministerial action regarding the censorship of the mayor-
Yes.
Conducted prior to five C.
Yes.
Is that possible, Nate?
Can we do that this evening, or does that require a-
It's, that's why it's ministerial in nature.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
So you do not have to have it on a posted agenda.
Okay. And I'll have to add notice to Jody. I'm sorry. I'll have to have you listen to the tape because I won't be able to say it again. And they already all agreed to it. And I'll accidentally change a word because I'm human.
Did you say you're okay with what Nate said? You were, you were walked out?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He wants to go on it before we go on this.
No, I, I think absolutely it needs to occur before.
So we'll do that in the-
Just wanted to make sure. You were out. You didn't say yes, so.
Okay.
All right. We are on the resolutions. Any others on the resolutions?
On five B, the Redflex contract, question for Mr. Reader, and that is whether or not there were, there were discussions with other companies that provide similar services prior to, or even contemporaneous with the discussions with Redflex on extending that contract. I think there are, as you come up, there are roughly about nine other companies in the country that provide similar services, and at least three, there are two other companies that are on rough par with Redflex in size.
Right. So was your question, as part of this submittal for an amendment, did we?
Did we have discussions with any of the other companies to see if we could get a better deal?
No.
Okay. And that's my question. Thank you.
We did negotiate, though, the-
Yeah, it's better than the first.
Right, yeah. We, we didn't follow the terms of the original agreement exactly. We did work with Redflex to renegotiate the terms to a more favorable situation for us.
Okay. So we're basically sole sourcing this?
Well, no. We're, we're acting within the allowances of the contract, which is a renewal.
Well, but we're also extending it for an additional-
No, sole source is when you select somebody without-
Is it a renewal when you exercise both options concurrently?
Pardon?
Is it a renewal when you exercise both options concurrently? I don't know the answer.
If the options are available, we don't have to go back out for this with options for.
We, from the original agreement, we had the ability to extend it this long without going out. And with the reduction in the fees that we're promising it here, we thought that was just a good deal to go ahead and just do all four years at once.
So it'd be exercising, but there were two, two-year options to renew? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be exercising both concurrently at the same time?
Correct.
At a cheaper, or at a better price for the city?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
And administratively, I could probably have done two years, but I felt it was important to get you guys involved, so, which is what we did. Anything else on the resolutions?
Can you tell, tell me on five F, what the cost is to the city on that?
I can tell you exactly. Well, not exactly, but-
Yeah, Don doesn't have to come up.
If you say five F, I'm sorry.
Five F, yeah. The partner with the DNR on the, can you tell me what that?
Well, I don't know, Don. Is, I had some questions, because I kind of did some analysis. There's no factor for transportation costs, no factor for liability insurance, which we probably self-insure, maybe, but it referenced a performance bond requirement, and I didn't know if there were supplies, materials, equipment that the city needed.
Yeah, all the equipment they furnish us, if we have a problem, BART's the one that, NICE Warner's the one that takes care of these. And if they're, they come out probably once a month from Iowa City, and if we have a problem, they come out sooner. For example, BART sets up a standard operating procedure, and there's three of these machines on Franklin Elementary's roof, and then three other ones on Eighth Avenue behind Griffin Pipe in that area, so.
So BART's, um-
BART's hourly wages, thirty-three, twenty-four an hour.
So on a five-month average, January, we spent nineteen and a half hours. February, we spent thirty-one and a half. March, twenty-four and a half.
Right.
Twenty-point-seven-five in April and May. For some reason, February was fifty percent higher in hours spent.
We had problems that, that month, so that's why you-
And so if you average those five months, times BART's salary, it's eleven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. We get fourteen-seventy for the contract. Didn't include any of those additional costs, the cost to drive there. Yeah, if we needed to have any liability insurance or performance bond, if there was any supplies. I then factored year six on an average salary increase. At that point, it would, BART's salary, and with most step, I just did the annual increase, would be thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, for which we'd get fourteen-seventy-seven. And, uh, so it's, it's not a lot of money to the city. As HUD does it, unless they can find somebody that does it cheaper than they do it. One of the concerns I had is it's a six-year contract. We don't have any way to get out of. They can cancel it at any time. Nope, they're just looking for a contractor to do the work.
So it's like a hundred-and-forty-six dollars or something that we-
Yeah, yeah.
After we pay him?
We were, we would have been losing money the last few years, but with this increase from eleven-hundred-and-forty to fourteen-seventy-seven, on average, we'd make three-hundred-and-fifty bucks a month. If nothing goes wrong, like I said, in February, we lost money. We would have lost money.
Well, we can renegotiate for a two-year contract with DNR if that's what you're looking at. They don't really want to do that, but she said they would.
Why wouldn't we want to do that?
That they don't want it.
Oh, they don't want it.
Yeah, they don't want it, yeah.
Yeah, IDNR is looking for a six-year contract.
And again, this just came before me, and it says, "Six-year contract" needs to go before the councils.
I just, I wanted to know what the cost was and if it was a requirement by EPA or, you know, who.
Yeah, they, they-
I guess, why are we doing it? I guess is my question.
The Clean Air Act in nineteen-seventy is where it started. And we've been providing that contract. I've been here twenty-eight years, and it started before I was here.
This is, the DNR employs local contractors to collect filters and sampler data in areas of the state where it'd be cost prohibitive to include the area on its routine route. So we just change out the filters and send in the sample to the state, to the state hygienic laboratory.
Is this all this guy does?
No.
So he's doing all this.
I hope so.
Oh, it's like-
How do you sign up for that? How do you get that job?
It requires by the contract to take a sample every third day. And so it's fairly labor-intensive. And again, to that end, he spent nineteen and a half hours in January, thirty-one-point-five in February, twenty-four-point-seven in March, twenty-point-seven-five in April and in May. in April and in May, so.
Yeah, the, the why goes to the federal bureaucracy running amok, because the EPA puts the hammer down on DNR, who then in turn goes to the city's name. Yep.
I was just wanting to make sure.
But the sampling does provide, you know, good data as far as, you know, the one off Griffin Pipe, we had the only non- attainment for lead in the whole state, the only city back prior to two thousand thirteen.
According to the EPA standards, which were slashed by a quarter of the previous